Thank you guys.
Thanks, Lonny.
Just a couple formalities here. My name is Jacob and this is a flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Any public comment? We'll probably save yours for our highway guy. Okay. Anything else? Is there a motion to approve minutes in today's agenda?
I have a couple of questions. Under public comment, we talk about funding two commissioners to research a new building. Should not wait that. Should they be named or not?
Johnson and Zimple?
Well, I got no, Tom volunteered.
Oh, oh.
I'm just signing it out there.
Sure could. I don't care. Sure could.
Tom and Don?
And my second thing under share is Miller discussed each of the key dispatches. And appreciation week part, wasn't it? Dispatchers, not law enforcement?
And jailers, I think, wasn't it? Well, dispatchers and jailers to follow up like a couple of years later or something.
I think it was just this last week or whatever.
For dispatchers?
Yeah.
Do we do anything with jailers?
I think that was coming at a later date.
You want me to put it out?
You can add it in there.
Correctional officers at a later date?
Very good. Anything else? Is there a motion to approve the amended minutes in today's agenda by Carlson? To second example, any discussion? All in favor, signify the saying, aye. Motion carries. Thank you for being patient.
No problem.
I don't have a heck of a lot for you guys this morning. I'm still working on a couple of different things. Trying to figure out how to get something a little more concrete before appearing before you guys. With that being said, do you guys have anything for me this week?
I think so.
I had some comments you were about to do. You play your companies.
Say that again.
I'm trying to think of the word. The law's where they basically don't want to start a law like they did in sanctuary counties regarding the Second Amendment. What you might look into legal applications for that.
Well, I think that had got brought up to me once before outside of this board. As far as like they're wondering about passing a resolution saying that the county stands behind the Second Amendment, that kind of thing.
I think they're saying new targets, which is the thing that the goal is that the federal government passes new gun restrictions that the county involved in, of course. That's basically.
I mean, there's, there isn't, in my opinion, very good, a whole lot you can do. Federal law is federal law. It's the supreme law of the land regardless of the due degree of their.
I think it's also, I think it might be a liability issue. If you go, let's suppose as a time period, if the gun or weapon or sanctuary is all about our federal, you don't enforce the law. Who's liable?
Yeah, it'd be the county.
Yeah, so I feel as, as some states have done.
I'd say the states more likely to fall behind that thinking than would be the counties.
A lot of counties have already done in other states. And I think there's a company itself.
Fall River and I'm not sure about Bennett. And you had a phone call and a conversation with Gary Sheldon. Because Gary called me and was wanting to know how many signatures they were going to need on a petition to petition the county board to pass a resolution.
I had somebody also.
I know.
They're out there, they're.
Also, that'd be an initiate measure, right?
So, I can, I can, I know some of the counties have been going through and talking about it. You know, at that time when we had never been approached.
Called Grant County, talked to Karen. I know I talked to what's McCollum Network and he was not bringing it up.
They're behind that bill too, don't they?
I think Travis County Minnesota is getting in the process.
Really? Minnesota.
So anyway, that's something that, okay, I'll check on that.
I mean, yeah, as far as the legality of it, I mean, like I said, federal law is the supreme law of the land, no matter where you're at in the country. And if there is any type of court action that involved it whatsoever, the federal law gets control.
But could they arrange our law enforcement to enforce it? They don't have, do they have control over our law enforcement?
No, apparently don't because sanctuary cities, they don't have much enforcement.
The primary example is marijuana. For instance, if illegal by federal law, that state's supposed to be going, well, you can't. They're just saying we're not going to enforce federal law. And that's what this is.
Guns deal with.
It's still a federal crime.
So I mean, basically, I mean, one of the things that we talked about was doing it with these ghost guns or something like that? So if they passed a law, federal law says you can't have a ghost gun. People in different counties would say that, no, in Roberts County, if we decide to do that, you can have a ghost gun.
Well, we're not, yeah.
That's fine in the face of.
My example was if, let's suppose they passed a law that said you can only have a magazine that holds nine rounds. And the county passes a resolution that says, well, we're going to sanctuary county. And someone walks into Rollers, where there was a fifty gallon magazine and shoot people, who's responsible?
Why would you want to get?
What's to get federal law? What we don't enforce, well, who's liable? I'd be mired in some, yeah.
And it would get into a very deep and lucky fight over that. The marijuana example is a good example of how it works, but that's a completely different.
Yeah.
Item of interest because marijuana in and of itself, or by itself, I should say, isn't as divisive as a topic and necessarily as.
There's nothing in the Constitution that protects or takes away your right to smoke marijuana, right?
Well, and public opinion has changed on marijuana throughout the country over the last ten, fifteen years. And I know people can debate the levels of dangerousness and things like that. That's been a personal debate, but I don't know. It just, it seems like a very sticky legal con room to get into.
Can't let somebody else fight those battles, right?
Well, I think, I'm surprised the state hasn't undertaken.
If the state doesn't, that's one thing.
Yeah.
And another problem is if you have just these counties doing it, then you, you know, you've got, you cross a county line and.
Yeah, it is.
Well, you know, that was my take, that's my whole research idea. It's kind of the thing where the state can impose restrictions, laws more restrictive than the federal numbers. Like Bush were telling Tennessee, for example, says, I, where they make the Jack then.
Yeah, yeah.
So you can, you can restrict further, but you can't, but you can't say, well, we're going to legalize something that's fed law. So trying to do what's been overized federal law is symbolic, I think.
But it, yeah, could be a symbolic thing, but if anything were to happen, because way less symbolic and more burdensome.
Speaking of marijuana, where's that recreational marijuana? Is that going into effect July first?
So the Supreme Court is hearing oral arguments on the lawsuit surrounding amendment A. I believe the twenty, twenty eight? Sometime late April. So I fully expect that there will be a decision before July first. Given the nature of the lawsuit and the impending effective date.
And medicals going forward?
Medicals going forward. The legislature didn't repeal it. That goes into effect July first, whether the state agencies are ready to deal with it or not. We'll just have to look for guidance from the Department of Revenue and probably whatever that new department with agriculture.
But it could.
Yeah. Look, we're guidance from those two state agencies on how that's going to be handled. Like I said, the lawsuit from amendment A has had the Supreme Court oral arguments later this month. Probably get an opinion mid to late June before the effective date. Depending which way the Supreme Court goes, it's either going to go or hang. It's going to be, it's going to be an all or nothing depending upon the court rules. And that's, if the court rules against it, it's not going to be, it'll be coming back in the election. And we'll be having these conversations again. I'll keep you updated. If anybody hear anything about that. Anything else?
I don't know.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Don. Can you wait? We'll get this up.
Oh.
We're running just a little bit behind. It's nine twenty-two. And we have the first reading of ordinance number twenty-eight. The open burning ordinance. Whereas it is lawful purpose of the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Roberts to enact ordinances to protect and promote the general welfare, health, and safety of its citizens. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Roberts may impose a ban to prohibit or restrict open burning in order to protect the public health and safety pursuant to South Dakota codified law seven dash eight dash two zero one eight. Are there any proponents to the ordinance? Hearing none. Are there any opponents? Did we receive any written comments one way or another? At this point, we can close public hearing and we need a motion to set the time for the second reading of this ordinance. One week, you all right?
Do you want to do it next week on the same time?
Sounds good. Motion from the board for April twenty-seventh at nine fifteen. Commissioner revealed, is there a second? Discussion, all in favor, signify the saying, aye. Oppose say no. Motion carries. Okay.
So is that that heat going off last week? Did the, did the burn ban get lifted?
Yeah, you want formal action on that?
Well, I'm just curious. It was kind of like it, it kind of came out of nowhere. Like, well, so and so and so decided and, you know, Dylan kind of thought too that should have been happening by the border.
Maybe it's got the advertising law or whatever. Yeah, you got a point, John. This Dennis got a call too, but I got a call. Sheriff's office didn't know at that time or whatever. And that did turn out it was on the phone that it got messed with.
Yeah, but, yeah, I was just curious because that's why.
Motion on matters, but we have to do that.
I think you probably should just.
I should have something to take, uh, record, yeah?
Do you remember what day that was? We got the, it's raining cats and dogs. Do you remember what day?
Wednesday, wasn't it?
Was it Wednesday?
Yeah, I think it was.
Yeah, it started Tuesday night, Wednesday, I believe.
We can just put the burn ban lifted.
The motion by example, is there a second by Carlson? All in favor, signify the saying, aye.
Aye.
Well, that's what the new ordinance, that's the new ordinance. Right. And that makes sense.
Absolutely.
Sure, yeah.
It would go better than I said.
Exactly.
All right. All of a sudden, we're headed, just like that.
Yeah, hi Tammy, Don Carlson. How are you today? Good. Can I ask you to do something for me, please? Right now I have an automatic payment made every month to U.S. Bank. And I need, I need to stop that. I got that dollar amount, everything when you're ready for it, unless you. Yeah, three thirty-two forty-two. Yep. Usually comes in the last, May sixth would be the next, next one. I just need to stop that permit. Okay, maybe I'll try this. Okay. I'll try to stop in later today than maybe, if not tomorrow. All right. Thanks, Tammy. Appreciate it. Bye-bye.
Don, what you doing?
Oh boy, I don't know. Too much stuff going on in my life right now. It's getting all confusing.
I got a lot of stuff. Your vengeance is there. There's so many people in here today that.
Yeah, it's going to be, it's going to be, there'll be at least three plus Sherry and.
I'm trying to, so that, I'm going to be, I'm going to leave, you know?
Okay.
She figured it'd be eleven of you guys in here, so.
Yeah.
I'm trying to get the camera.
Get the hell out of there, John.
Get most of the people on the camera that are going to be in here. That's why I'm rearranging a little bit here.
Sure. Quick phone call.
Because I'm going to leave here at ten thirty. You need to start.
Okay.
And have it on the top of the courier, so.
All right. Uh, hi. Uh, I guess we're going to go late this afternoon. I thought we were done at noon, but then we have more people coming in at noon. So we're going to be here till, till sometime after that. But yeah, I got your note on Longmore, so I'll, I'll, I'll see if I can maybe, I don't know. I need to talk about that, but otherwise I'll probably try to meet tomorrow sometime. If I do not take John with me, if I do with John, I can't do it till Saturday. And I'm not even sure that they're open for that kind of business on Saturday. I'm not sure, but.
Rearrange a little bit so you guys.
Well, he'd be able to come in the garage and do it.
I'm going to leave, you know? And if you guys do need me, just kind of yell because I don't have.
Yeah, okay. Well, I just wanted to let you know.
So you guys can just give me a big yell. Jason, come over here. We're going over.
All right, well.
Because I don't think you're going to extend your session, but if you would have it, do it.
Well, do it after.
Be able to listen, so.
All right. Thanks, Mike.
How long is it going this afternoon? Do you guys know?
I'm not sure.
I think to two, about two thirty.
So, yeah, so.
Yeah, we'll break for, we'll break for the noon now, I suppose.
You're ready for noon and come back at one, so that's what she said. I talked to Sherry about it and she didn't say how long you're going.
Yeah, I think she only allocates so much time for each person and then typically, I don't know, some, some use two minutes and some use twenty-two minutes. It's hard to say, so.
And they're supposed to call it, she said.
Yeah, I think we're all calling, yeah.
But she said, you know how that is, sometimes a little walking, they come in.
Sure, yeah.
Right, just because she said there's so many people coming in the room, I said I'm going to get out of here for two minutes, so.
Yeah, I think after dinner, there'll just be us and Sherry and Lisa, because the other three guys, or city guys, were they hanging off that? I thought, I thought we did their stuff first and then we did our stuff. Maybe I, whatever Sherry told you. Whatever she told you.
Yeah, she, I didn't ask her how long you're going this afternoon.
Okay. What's that township? I'll read that tomorrow.
Nice we could do all this stuff.
It's, that's some nice things that came about the pandemic is the, there's phoning calls and the likes of that. Especially for a lot of those people that live way down, you know, far out of town. Makes it nice for them.
You were supposed to livestream the concerts tonight, but they postponed it till the third. So the middle school, high school, spring concerts.
Oh, is that right?
FBLA is on the town. FBLA is at some convention or something today.
Who's doing the schedule? Like, did they realize that?
Brown's Valley Schools, they didn't even have any of the concerts at all. They should have two.
I can't, I can't allude like who's, who's doing the schedule.
Parents only are.
So now they're going on May third instead. This is all right. I've got a long weekend. There was that All-Star game Saturday. All-Star basketball game is coming.
Oh. Big crowd there, no?
It was pretty full for some. Yeah, it was a pretty full house. Nice, nice facility.
Low average.
Very nice.
If I constantly, if we're constantly getting. So we need to stick by the rule.
Sports kids are throwing down there on their weight group. I built that, they go down.
Is anybody planning on going to Millbank on Thursday? I got this email last Tuesday afternoon that they're having their quarterly meeting over in Millbank on Thursday.
Oh, I just, I'm going to search there. See what's short notice. I thought they canceled.
I have email.
I think I'll just zoom it. And it says it starts at noon. I don't want to sit and watch something other evening. What time, you know, it's like, what time you can start the actual.
Okay.
I'm watching sheep Thursday. I'm seeing sheep on Thursday. Oh, is that right?
I know Pat is planning on going. So far, he's the only one. I did, I did send in yesterday that potentially two people.
Did we not discuss previously paying for that now, the meal?
Yeah.
Right?
Right.
No, I don't want to be there. Sue falls out there.
And it's not.
You want to see a time?
He isn't working on for any of us to like. Mark's got a second vaccine that afternoon. And between Jay and Sue, they want him to be gone or. You're moving, they're moving on Thursday?
She's going to the nursing home on Thursday. She's going to get her second shot. Moves her stuff down there for her. The veteran of the day, there you are.
You had this second shot, didn't you?
Yes, I did.
And bother?
No.
What, you have Fridays? Yeah, Fridays. I just don't know.
What did it? Yeah, I think that's.
We did have one employee that died really sick again from the second.
Well, did he?
And he got from his first shot too.
You did? Which, you know what kind you got?
He got the Moderna.
You did, okay. Do you want to look at this page?
No, she already, she did respond to me that. Because there is a Zoom.
They say that some people are bad and corporate and they get.
Well, they didn't die.
David, I know, he got sick.
But then Pat.
Oh, really?
I just, I got my shot to the VA and they always send, whatever they do today, they send to my insurance company. So I got a statement from the insurance company saying they paid for my, for my shots. First shot was billed at a hundred dollars and then they reduced it down to like thirty-eight. And the second shot was billed at a hundred and sixty dollars. They negotiated it down to sixty or something like that. But I had no idea how much those shots cost. Apparently if you, I think the federal government pays for the most part or. But yeah, they're billing it one hundred, one sixty. I don't know why the second shot would be any different than the first shot.
I was wondering why they were billed through insurance level for the government.
Initially, they didn't and then they're not billing for the shot, they're billing for the administration of the shot. Giving the shot, which, when they first started, they didn't. And then somebody approved it.
And when they first started talking about the shot thing, I thought that the president, if I've announced this, the insurance companies would pay for all this for free. Maybe I just understood.
That's what it would be.
I mean, I don't think it's cost anybody. I don't know if it did. It cost me. It just, they billed the insurance.
You think with, you know, giving a two shot or?
Yeah.
But cheaper to give somebody a two shot.
Now it sounds like we're going to have to get a booster at some point in time, huh? They got a good thing working. They're not going to let up now.
They're going to have an agenda to offer that.
No, no, I don't have one. Do you want me to, I could email Karen and ask her.
Is this our copy's key for?
Yeah.
All right, okay.
Do you want me to find out what they're considering for lunch?
No, I don't.
Hi, Matt, good. Maybe I'll do that from my.
I just wondered if maybe if we're going to have a, propose a regional table.
That didn't make, that never made it anywhere in the states. I guess I never saw anything more of it, but.
Anything more on the other? Jail coming up?
Moving outward, you know? Yeah, they tore down a building, I think, last summer that was, was the old administration building, the old school or some.
Old TC school, yeah.
Have they heard anything more from First District than this two million dollars that we're giving?
Yeah. Thank you. There was just something yesterday.
Is that absolutely wasted?
They just want to make sure that we have, are done some births, which we have. We're registered at Sam, as we are.
He came back and did.
And after Sam registration. And that's about it. I see there was quite a few wind towers moving on.
I noticed that the other day went to a job too. Little test fire or something, but. I don't know. Have you ever heard when they're supposed to bring them online or sometime in summer?
I haven't heard.
You know, I know, I know. I know a lot of that stuff, right?
Yeah.
They're just there right now.
They're not online, we know. I think they're just online and testing them off.
About half of them that were spinning on Sunday. We received any money, any tax revenue from those powers?
I would guess until they start generating power, you probably wouldn't get anything, right? Because in the basic kilowatts or?
I'm not really sure on the timeline.
You go here or you follow me.
Because that would probably be run through utilities, I would. I'm not sure. It runs through utilities like a.
I don't know how that money is supposed to flow through to landowners, schools, townships.
Utilities don't come until August.
Is that right?
I don't know if it does. I'll ask Carly over and see how, how they.
Those have been running for a couple years.
Yeah.
They got first.
They have a new auditor.
Good.
Was that right? Before the term expired, huh?
Yeah, she just retired.
No, I, I'm sick of it this year.
Want to trade? This one's working good.
I'm good till when? Twenty twenty-three, how much?
You want to hold the distance, you might be writing some checks or something.
Well, see, I think.
It's your trap.
I think the place too straight. So they just did those two miles. And he did, he made three passes, which he needed to do. But then he came back and I did the whole thing and just did two. We really watched very much.
They must have been moving on. They did these out.
No, that's, that's where that. Hold like that.
Once you hit them and once it starts in, you gotta stop and start over again.
Really, take it out and then come back and.
Yes, you know, you gotta go but. Cut these out and then cover it up. You know, all this should be turned in the middle and left alone.
John, if we're able to do in our minutes and when we're, you know, equalization.
Yep.
At number eighteen, Lockwood Township Anthony and Kimberly Holt with this change abstract.
No, let's see here. App, could be abstract.
Abstract?
Abstract.
What, okay, cause when I look at my notes, we're changing from non-A to A. Cause we have forty-one acres, so we call it like an A status. So is it change status?
Yeah.
And number eighteen, what was the name?
Anthony and Kimberly Holt. Right, they had two things.
Okay, change from non-A to A.
Right.
Okay.
So, so stat, change status?
I, I will change that.
I didn't know, I didn't. That should be a correction to the minutes then, you know. Taking care of it.
Yeah, I could also change it on my, on my other minutes too. My equalization minutes, I always do separate.
Yeah, yeah. I didn't notice anything else. And getting compared to my notes, but I was.
From non-A to non, to A. Thank you.
Okay.
I hope they don't recognize me. No.
Boss the baby. Oh, okay. Love that. Is that the funeral thing? Sent a message to Pat that we're ready for him whenever he gets here. Propping company's gonna rip up the front of their building.
Building a new, they're building a new one.
Yeah, they left the old part, but they're just building a new office on their stomach.
Brown Valley is getting a Dollar General store too now?
Yeah, they got the Chinese doll board.
Dollar General?
Local businesses are not happy about that. The grocery stores, the store, the hardware store. I didn't realize they sold all that kind of stuff, right? Yeah, it's not happening.
They said the bank got sold too?
Well, you know, I, I called after hours last night, I realized after hours, Bob answered the bank at the phone. He said something like, they were just here working on this something for the new bank or something like that. So I didn't, I didn't pick up on it until he mentioned it. I'm not surprised. Wondering what it would be here.
No, they said who they had, but I don't remember who it is.
Small chain, I suppose. Well, maybe they'll pump some money up. Right now you gotta, gotta pick up your statement. They don't have them out. Where I tried to take my debit card there and transfer it into my bank. Now they said, oh, we can't do that. We don't have that. They'll pump twenty percent from now. Hardware stores sold?
Don't they want to get sold?
Yeah, the Backer Brothers bought it. Had that town, the business in town, they sell, they stuff from China, like go karts, ATVs, little ones, cheap ones. Pretty much disposable stuff. And swimming pools, they said they've been selling, said five thousand little ATVs a year, something like that. They even made it a killing during COVID.
Oh, my word.
So they, they're starting a new business. They're gonna sell like parts for chisel plows and batteries and filters and this kind of stuff. Uh, so they just bought that and then they're gonna add on to that building and run the hardware stores and run this other thing too.
Then Harbor Hanger, which was.
Harbor Hanger, yeah. And David Mattress Hands, uh, I think May first. And for some time they were just gonna return their inventory and sell the building and stuff like that. Didn't happen.
That's a pretty nice store. They've got everything.
Yeah, they got a lot of stuff there, absolutely. On plan.
They don't have an assistant either. They have a.
Yeah, and this one out here is off the.
Yeah, they got a lot of stuff too. They got good hours, open Sunday. That's kinda handy.
Yeah, system, pretty lucky to get this one.
Say, we, they, they got.
Yes, they've been in that new store. It was in the old one. They had that main street. Pretty cool hall for you, didn't it? To go there? Well.
If I could go straight, there's a profile, maybe about five, but I gotta go three about south.
Okay.
Like a big water tower, but it's straight east to me.
Okay.
Yeah, cause the profile that other business folks.
Do you ever go to that restaurant there, that Legion?
No, I've never been there.
They, they got really good food.
I've heard, you know, they were closed for a long time.
Yeah, and they, they raised the prices quite a bit since they were closed. They closed it just. It's, uh, it's still reasonable and they have good food.
No, I've heard.
Big menu, actually.
They signed their name, they said.
That Dairy Queen there is gonna open up again too.
Well, you know what, what I heard.
Danny Hansen.
That's what I heard, yeah. Do you want to go? Very good for it. Never been over.
Yeah, didn't get here on it these days.
Kenny and Joe.
What do you do, what do you?
I heard that.
They good food.
We've got good food.
He's got good food.
Someone said he was at these two auctions recently and like, I remember seven boxes.
Oh, just buy a new cartridge.
You can, you can just.
Pour some on there, wasn't it?
They were out at.
Yeah.
I know they were out at.
Little rollers.
At the time of sale.
Yeah, then they were that one over by Wilma, the two. All the Rockies.
Oh, Serhant.
There's the new building there too, right next to it. It's like a really brilliant building, I don't think it's worth in there, but like, it's like a house. Right next to that old Dairy Queen.
Well, maybe they're volume two, nine.
No, they're, I mean, they're far enough apart that they're on separate grounds.
Yeah, here's where the Wheaton Legion, the steel tiles that have all the names.
Yeah. That's what they said, yeah. I think they charge you, they charge the people a hundred bucks to put them up. Yeah, it's just got all pulled. It's been a lot noisier in there though, because they were like, they had old building with tiles, acoustical. And now it's. Back down. I think it's quite a bit noisier.
That's right.
Howdy, howdy.
We got the, the striping contract with the state that we've ever yet. And our share would be sixteen thousand with what the miles I have in there. See, we had to have this in pretty early. And, uh, so with the breakdown in the end, if we do, do all the striping that we planned on doing, it would be like sixteen thousand dollars. Last year we were way down. We didn't do as much. And so we'll probably be doing more if we.
How many miles do you think you'd do it?
Uh, we got ninety, ninety-six miles on hand. Between ninety-six and a hundred one miles is what I had originally. But I have ninety-six in the contract here right now. But that could change with our pre-con meeting this end of month I do. Uh, or around before that. We always shoot that usually. Miles and then how it goes this summer.
But if we had the money, it'd be nice to do it for least that much, cause there's, there's, there's a lot missing, not a lot of rules.
There's a sixty-six counties. Not everybody's doing very many miles, but they have a breakdown and I'm not sure Ben was gonna find out more too, but. About all this money, we don't get a hefty lot. You know, the state, sixty percent on the state and then the counties and then, you know, it doesn't really amount to a lot that they're really paying. We got a sixty, forty breakdown.
Well, helps.
But it's not a hundred percent. Anyway, if we have a motion to sign that and then, uh, Ryan can have it in the minutes, he's signing it and sending it back to the state. We have a motion on that?
There are motions to. Second. Tom for guilt, the second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion carries.
And then, uh, let's see. Do have something I'd like to talk to the law in executive session. This is what, you know, with the sheriff's department.
Is it more personnel then? Is that what it is?
It's not personnel, but it is about like, uh, the diesel fuel or about the gas and stuff that you share. With the program that we're doing.
Legal thing or is it?
Well, it's legal. It's not legal. It's kind of a confidential thing that you don't want to get out to the public, you know?
But it involves personnel.
It don't involve personnel.
If you're gonna talk about somebody, ain't it a lot of people?
No, not necessarily. Good. How we're working with the gas pump with the deputy sheriff's and the sheriff's department.
So we got.
Personnel.
Deputy personnel?
Well, deputy personnel.
Well, these, these are the personnel or legal or contractual, that's about everything.
What's the deputy personnel?
Deputy personnel. There are motions for executive session to discuss personnel matters by Carlson. There are second to that by Johnston. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion carries.
I'm gonna tell you how to play out a dumpster.
Uh, we're hauling Blackberry out of the jail for some. Uh, we're hauling Blackberry out of the jail for some. Uh, we're hauling Blackberry out of the jail for some.
Oh. Oh. We'll pick up the rest, but we need to get on that, as soon as you can get on it, then we can figure out what we're gonna do.
Well, I looked at last week, last September, all those would go through from that interception through there to the east.
Okay.
And then it all keep going until the last.
Yeah, wherever.
And then, uh, we have the north and south though, we have.
Well, we'll, we'll take care of that. We put down twenty, twenty-five loads every year, so we'll, we'll take care of that.
We'll do that and then we'll see how it looks.
Okay, that sounds fair, thank you.
Uh, let's see, so, uh, there.
Shit.
We'll be on eight two tomorrow in the states.
So, I'm asking. It's don't affect it bad last year, I'm all weekend calling.
Yeah, well, you remember when you called me when they were going through it?
Yeah, I said that.
I mean, the frost came on and it had homes like this, you know, that's gonna happen when that frost comes.
If you have any idea, I mean, looking up your crystal ball when roulette might come off or?
I'll take them off then next week.
In next week, okay.
First.
Okay.
In the next week, yeah.
All right, good.
Yep. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, if we're having a demo down in Grand County for, they'd say, it's a, it's a road groomer that they use on the ground. And they're doing a demo on Grand County tomorrow, I'm going to that tomorrow, there's gonna be Grand County, Day County and us gonna be doing, they're gonna do a demo on Grand County, so.
Was it doing?
Road groomer. The smallest one that I was like, go over forty-five thousand dollars.
Jesse Street, is that any, really permits you to night? He wants to talk to the.
The kind like the D N, what you see, the little D N R thing you see for railways and stuff like that, it's kinda, got metal.
Yeah, I know, like that pole behind, yep.
Yeah, okay.
It's a bigger.
Yeah, a commercial, yeah.
You gotta.
Yeah, we're gonna. It looks better. Look at Shark Course, I wouldn't have any time to look, because they never.
Probably should get Kim and Jerry.
Around this down the road, they have lady, if you can keep it up. If you like.
I've heard a lot about them, I like.
And they're like, just, I told you, March probably, I don't know, I haven't seen it yet, and, uh, he was seven year old, murdered, he's a dog, he's an alley cat, but he really moves the road up there. He's an alley cat, but like, yeah. So, we're gonna be doing that tomorrow at two o'clock.
Okay.
Who's going, did you go on up?
Yep, doing down there, so.
Jake's and Pitt love it.
You got down that one, you know, it's like, dude, yeah. So, one of you guys can see that.
Who, who did you say is putting that on?
It's, uh, Grand County, it's gonna be done with demo in Grand County, but the company that sells them, uh, don't have a share with me.
There he is.
Okay.
I left it on my desk.
Okay, that's, that's all right.
But, uh, you're gonna do a demo, no, I got it right here. They're gonna do a demo at two o'clock. And this is kinda what it looks like, you pull it behind, pick up a tractor or whatever.
That's just like those.
Yeah, that's carbines, I think, they're gonna steal or.
D R, there's a D R, yeah.
You know, regular steel or carbines, I told him, carbines is the only way we can go. You know, regular steel or carbines, and I told them, well, carbines is the only way we go, so that you have long lasting. And it just rooms up the road and helps kinda reclaim and groom up the road.
Cover up some of the power.
And this, this manufacturer here is kinda out of, uh, let's forget where they are, I think they're out of Iowa somewhere. They always have the Shark Course down, so they're doing demos here, so.
Nice.
For fifteen thousand dollars, they just do out of line or something like that.
Well.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We have a gentleman that wants to talk to us, Jesse Street is the name, was the, was the one that we had, uh, the variance that we had denied.
Oh, okay. Terry and Kim are on their way.
All right, so I said we could, we could get on the phone and give him a little conversation.
I'm, uh, no.
Okay.
I only have, no, no, domestic abuse.
They've been abusing.
We also need a motion to approve, um, three hundred and six dollars and seventy-four cents for the women's circle. There's domestic abuse. Motion by Justin, is there a second?
We're getting, thank you, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Yeah, we, we'll retain that, um, thirty-four dollars and eight cents.
Yeah, what time was he on? It was supposed to be.
I don't think, well, he was, he was the last one this morning.
Eight-thirty, nine o'clock.
So, had he called in or?
No.
He just called, Christie apparently, and said he wanted.
I'm sure they called him downstairs and.
Cancelled, yeah.
My feeling is, maybe next, maybe next month.
And again, I think my, my biggest issue was it, was the sixteen feet, I mean, you keep going up and up and up, and I mean, he's, he's quite large on even overall footprint, but, uh.
You know that Street?
You're.
Jesse.
Okay.
Yeah, really, she'd be coming the next week and not bringing this one back.
Yeah, and it was, can we open the meeting or?
Was it?
You'd have to, yeah, you have to back it up here.
Was it a conditional use?
Yep.
Yes.
It's a variance, well, conditional use for oversized buildings. Isn't that kind of a variance?
So I don't have.
Do you think?
Uh.
Do you want it back?
Well, yeah, pure same thing, condition use, and this other one we approved, and variances for setback difference, isn't it?
But I think all the maps are. Wouldn't it be a variance, conditional uses of? Use of what?
It was a conditional use permit application.
Yeah, but we're wondering if it shouldn't have been.
It's permitted use, I mean, this.
Right, yes, just was, yeah.
It's not, it should be a condition, it should be a variance.
And then the first one would be the same situation.
It really should be like, I think, there should be.
Said, yeah, I mean, the other guy is higher, they're both of the same length, but the other guy, Street's a lot higher, taller, and.
Yeah, the question variance, or, yeah, maybe it should be variance, yeah. Official, official definition of.
Well, it's a permitted use.
It is a permitted use.
So why is there a requirement?
Did, did Mr. Street call you guys downstairs at all?
No, we called him and told him that it was denied, that you had sent to let him know and then tell him that what we could do.
Okay.
He did say that he would be getting an attorney involved.
Oh, really?
That, that works real well, threaten me right on, right on.
He said what?
That he would be getting an attorney involved in that he would be, um, doing a, another conditional use. Because we had to ask him if he wanted to apply for another conditional use, um, at your guys' request, he said he'd bring it back next month.
Right.
And he would need to apply for a new one, so I was just asking him if we would just be able to refund him a hundred dollars versus his two hundred dollars for their paperwork again.
Okay, all right.
So, we need to get the ball rolling if that's what he was planning on doing, so we called everybody and told them. And that's what our agreement is, after it's been approved or denied, we call and let him know that day.
Okay. All right.
Okay, we were questioning if, why it was listed as conditional use rather than variance?
Cause he needs all the setbacks, he is building an oversized building.
Okay, and according to our definitions, variance, a variance is authorized only for height, area, and size of structure, all sides of yards and open spaces. So isn't it a variance rather than a conditional use?
And the zoning book, and if you go to the Lake District, it shows like, um, conditional uses for, um, land, or in the Lake District. Um, so, um, down there, so I don't know, but that's where it is in the county, but conditional use.
Okay, this is a.
The monkey body's up, they're gonna stay in here and listen to this one thing.
And attached garage, sidewalls greater than fourteen feet. But it's also under permitted principle of use and structures, attached garage is non-attached to the building, and that's the dimensions of thirty-six by forty-eight by fourteen.
Right.
So it comes under permitted use.
He's building it larger than the permitted use size. So that's why it's a conditional.
I'm just saying it's listed here, it's listed here, that you.
That's conflicting information. We have a building, because of the use, the fact that it's bigger, is that a?
Is that, that's the conditional.
Or is that a variance, is it?
But a variance needs all the setbacks, he's not breaking any of the setbacks.
Well, there's a conflict with, with the definition. Yeah? Between the definition and what's under lay front property. Under lay front, it would, you know, it's a conditional use. But that's the definition of variance.
So that's something that we need to address to have a better mandate so that our together as a zoning board.
It's kind of a different language, the one, the both say the same thing.
Would you mind calling him back and telling him that we got his message and that the, uh, the business was done at eight-thirty to nine o'clock this morning? And that would have been the time to, to get his comments on record. We've got equalization now at ten-thirty, so, um, I guess that would be, that would be my request.
Get it going next month.
Yep, right, right, bring it back next month.
Okay, and you?
Do, you wanna send that out?
He makes a guess that threatening attorneys doesn't do much to help his cause. But not back for ten-thirty.
Right, Sheri. Yeah.
Here are the conditional uses that were denied and approved, so if you sign right underneath them. And then I'll give them back. And then I'll go downstairs and get all of our stuff.
Okay, I'll run these down to you shortly then, while you're getting the other.
I want copies of those before you.
Oh, okay.
Of course, it's, we've done happy to have come back another one, but then it should have been here today, so.
See, he's got a construction out there, so.
Sounds like he has good structure equipment he wanted to put in there.
Yeah. Does that become commercial?
You kind of, yeah, I find that, yeah.
You know, if you're putting a building upon doing in the first of, employees, you might say.
Yeah.
But you have a business, you have a business and put in that, it's a little on.
That's a big, yeah, that's a problem, and I'll say good point, too. After all the time we spent working on that thing, that stuff is, there is.
I think, I think it got turned out, but I think the commissioners will be here.
Which would have been easier, I think.
I don't, yeah, I don't think, if a building is permitted use, then it's likely a conditional use, because it's a building, the fact is.
Very responsible because of all the setback apartments. Now, you know.
You got a variance on the place to set it up.
Are you waiting down there, or do you wanna wait till?
Yeah.
You're gonna do this, very probably.
Right, from the north. We're sort of consolidated.
So what's, what's, so what's variance here? It's not that it's a building, it's a site, you know, you have two minutes of variance.
Yeah, I think he might be right down.
Sean, do we, are we going, are during now or not?
Yes, we'll turn on the regular commissioners and go into consolidating.
So maybe we should put flat resolutions and deals to get with the business.
During that, go in there.
That'd be great, yeah. Little recess a little bit for lunch, apparently that Yell isn't showing up out at the vaccine, mass vaccine.
Oh, and representative, yeah.
That representative because of inclement weather out in Colorado, so she will not be there.
She had snow in the hills last night.
Really?
Yeah, I think I talked to ten minutes, I thought someone said.
Really?
Sure. Here comes a crew, I don't know.
Good morning, guys. There's our guys.
Good morning.
How you doing?
Good morning. Good morning.
Has it been a year already?
Hey, Jason.
Actually, good.
So where do we get to that point there? Well, I don't know, that's what we always did, that's, okay.
We've always done it that way, you know?
Well, we don't wanna change.
We don't want to change at all.
Looks like something better, how are you?
How are you?
Good, 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 hard to believe, that time of the year already again.
It's too fast.
Well, this, this year went fast and slow.
I know, you're gonna hurt it, okay. Do you want to be on?
That sounds better, yeah.
No, yours, no, he was out there too, Brad.
Now you have to get a pen.
When's it get a pen?
Yeah.
We'll probably just turn them all in after seeing.
Give it back, huh?
Well, just for a moment.
Okay. Sounds like it's the city.
Still going.
Still going, huh?
How about the company, huh?
Well, someday you wonder.
Well, that's true.
Someday you wonder.
See you guys that big direction, huh?
Yeah, yeah.
I know, they're good people.
Yeah, I know.
You basically.
Yeah, I've been a big part of it, you know, forty-nine years now.
How many?
Forty-nine.
Oh, God, I'm not even forty-nine years, I'm not even that old.
Got it day by day, you know?
You've been on there forty-nine?
Since seventy-two.
Holy cow.
Yeah. So, I was straight out of. So I enjoy working with people.
Oh, yeah.
The top one, you signed your name there?
Yeah, top one, yep, and then, oh, you're saying bottom one, so.
Okay, so I pretty enjoy it.
Good. You'd have to, it'd been along forty-nine years, right?
Oh, God, yeah, I know, but, yeah. Joel's on, Joel's good to work with, you got Joel here.
I think I had Joel down in Carlson.
Yeah, he's a.
Oh, hey.
Yeah.
Kim Zempel. Kim Zempel?
Yeah.
Hey, how you doing? Want to head from here?
I can get behind you.
Yes.
And I'm Don Sattler.
Little Don.
Everybody was Don, everybody was Don.
We don't know you, Don.
I'm new here.
Yeah, good to have you, the beast heard the whisper.
Some days I feel like that.
Yeah. Be hold there, wait, before we, we start at this one?
Yeah, that's probably the first thing.
Go for it, Timbers.
Motion by Zempel to pay the clients.
Number two?
Is there a second to that?
Town, number two, what town, think town?
Town, yeah, that, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, uh, we need a motion to approve the plats that came through, motion by Carlson. Is there a second to that one? Commissioner Zempel, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
She said, wait, she said.
Motion carries. So we need to adjourn as county commissioner?
Yep.
We need a motion to adjourn by Carlson, or second to that by Justin? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
One more, Bill.
All right. As soon as Sheri and Kim get up, we'll.
Just went down to get their order. Here they come.
Well.
All right, we can call the order, our consolidated board of equalization, does everybody know each other? We've got a little new face here. All right. You know the players here, Tom, Commissioner Virgell?
Paul Stacey, David. You in the house?
Joel, thanks.
I know the rap, Tom Virgell.
Represents a Roswell area. All right, we'll turn it over to Sheri.
This is our, all right, Jim, first you're gonna convene into consolidated, and then your old will be signed.
Do we go in to consolidate?
Yeah, I think I did that, but call the order, our consolidated board. And you have your old sub office.
Can you have a, an accident or an accident?
With the, just deal.
Yeah, can I make?
Is this right? Is this eleven fifteen? We've got Carl on first? This show shows Carl's over here at eleven fifteen.
Now, please, let's make the event.
So do we have others before that, or what?
We do it here at ten-thirty.
Sheri, we're like forty-five minutes off here.
No, we are working.
Okay.
We're not doing the, the first appeal doesn't start until eleven fifteen, but we've got stuff.
Good, okay.
Can I go with that, Sheri? Sheri, can I get up?
Oh, sure.
Hey, here we go.
I know. So first of all, when we have consolidated, what is supposed to happen is that this is the sister pen book. It goes out, we have a book for every township, we have a book for every city that has all boundaries in. So, um, this needs to be signed by the auditor in the back after we have viewed the book. So what we need to go do is we need to go through the books, we need to make sure that there's, um, no, if there's a reason why there's no value on a certain line, we gotta check it out, we gotta see, we gotta review the books, that's part of the board's job, to make sure. That's part of the board's job, to make sure that there's no omitted or, um, extra added values. So I have four copies here to share. You need to take a half a step and start looking. So like for instance, on the very first page.
That's an awful lot of, that's an awful lot of stuff to review here, Sherry.
But, and this is what happens at every, is supposed to happen at every board meeting. Every township board, they have two books to look at. So it is just to make sure that we are not doing, we're not missing any properties that should be on the books or we're adding it. So like on the first one, it's, um.
So are you going, are you going page for a page or what?
I'm gonna just show you what I want you to look at first. So if you look at the first page. It says Sisyphean town within court limits is the, um, MCI growth com network service. There's no value on any of this line. Do you see that, no value? That essentially assessed, that goes through the state, so we don't have to worry about that. So then the next one, it starts up on the very north. Northwest corner of town is block one of the city assistant, and that has, uh, a non-owner occupied value for the land, house and for the land value. So that is the value there. So we just go through to make sure things got value on it. If there's some missing, it would say that it's tax exempt over in the legal side, there would be no value on it at that point. So if you just kind of want to zoom through that and just kind of check to see if there's an omitted value or something, um, books do, are supposed to be, you know, double check like this at the board meetings at all times, every year. So that's just something that I want to bring up. So we'll take a little bit to, to view those.
Those are church, they shouldn't have the value of that, huh?
Right.
Can I have an explanation, please? Okay, in the second column?
What page are you on?
Well, just like page one.
Okay.
Okay, N A dash D one must be the house, N A D is the lot, right?
Land, yes.
Okay, and then the third column, N D, like, D one S, what, what is, okay.
The difference between these two columns is the middle column is non-owner occupied.
Okay.
And, uh, third column is owner occupied.
Very good, all right, thank you.
Page fourteen, Sherry, we've got B and G properties of, uh, four hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars. What property would that be? It's a four, four fifteen each, Sherry?
The, I think it's the apartments across the nursing home.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, I see, it's not, okay.
So that.
That's the tech apartment.
Okay, 'cause seven eleven Harpens Street is the property location.
Right.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah, and you will see that, that the property address versus the mail address could be different than some of it.
Okay.
In fact, on a lot of them, if they're a non-owner occupied.
Okay, on page one fifty-one, maybe that's the top of the page, parking on thirty-eight forty-nine, there's no valuation. Four acre lot.
Oh, tax exempt.
So you see that then?
I, I know.
Oh, you just know that, okay.
Revenue status.
Oh, okay, all right, never mind.
I have a question. Well, when you go through this and you see somebody owns property, and my question is, you know, why don't they have owner occupied?
One of two things, it's not their primary residence or they have never applied for it. And so that would be something that we would red flag.
Okay.
And we would, you would tell us, or you would tell the board, the board would then tell us, give us a written notice saying, you know, maybe you want to send them another owner occupied, because I do know that they lived there for the last year. And that might not be their only principle, they might have another house in a different town that they're getting owner occupied on. And they can only have one owner occupied per, per place in the United States.
Per tax? And the rest of all?
None.
As a here of interest?
As a here of. Just like if you have two properties, you own one in Sisyphean and you own one of that lake property, um, whichever one is your primary residence, that's the one you get owner occupied on. Joe, do you want to sit up at the table here? I can sit back there.
No. Go on, page twenty-three on the bottom. Have this whole value.
Could, does tax exempt? A, a trust, if they put their property of a trust.
So they can get it somewhere else.
One, I didn't. Joe, that one on page twenty-three, that you were talking about that is, um, there's a legal documentation filed with the registry. Obviously, you say that that would be tax exempt.
Per perpetual?
Tim's face is going. Oh, yeah. It's medicating.
Trying to slow down a little bit.
At page two twenty? Uh, for the party hospital, worth hundred and two dollars, three hundred and forty-one dollars. How good is the tax bill there?
That is the dental office.
Dental office?
The dental office. Because it's rented out.
Rented out.
That's the normal.
Just that it has, eh, don't know.
The person owns two pieces of property evidently next to each other, the house is on one, they're getting owner occupied. It doesn't appear that they got owner occupied on the house, but on the lots, on page twenty-six.
Uh, if you looked at, on the next record number?
Yeah.
His, his house. Nope, I'm sorry, it's not, that's, uh, okay, we will have to make that adjustment. Oh, because, uh, we'll have to double check on that, um, possibly a, um, on a program to where he would only get so much. On a, um, special program, like the county office, we will have to double check on that. But otherwise, we will see why he's owner occupied and not owner occupied, we'll make a check on that. Oh, look it up here. He also owns up on the top two.
Yeah, so he should, he only. Own occupied at one piece, right? And, and they, and it's a general lot of, but what's the criteria on that? There's a criteria, is there not?
Okay, so his value, if you look at that, his, his house is on the west half of lots one, two, three, the north half, the north nineteen is the west half of lots four. His house value is thirty-eight thousand there, he's getting owner occupied on the land also. And then down below on record number three, three, nine, nine, um, he is getting owner occupied on just the land value. This is an outbuilding. Fifty-five, forty-four is an outbuilding, I would, just by looking at this, but we will definitely double check on that.
Fifty-five, forty-four is a land building?
It would be a non, it's not a house or garage, it would be an exterior building that is not like a shed.
All right, so we need to look at those three?
Yes.
Okay.
So we like stores?
Yeah, that's very check. So you can only get one wrong. So if you have a tax garage on your house, that's already part of it, if you have a detached, you will get.
Teal, yeah. Seems like a reasonable place.
I'm still on that. It's a house at the end of the street, attached garage, I don't recall.
He's got some buildings at the back. He has a building at the back.
Building at the end of. Not near both in the street, then. Own, just lots.
Insidious, they've got a lot of properties. Yeah, they do, they got a lot of mine.
The city of Sisyphean does own a lot of properties, they do have them. There is a lot of documentation that, uh, comes from the Sisyphean housing authority, or not, I'm sorry, I misspoke. Sisyphean. Yeah, and they are all put into the city in lieu of taxes. What page are you on, Tim?
Uh, one thirty-two, parcel number one zero five, questioning why that one would be taxed exempt.
Christian and missionary or Lannister? Have never applied.
Okay, where is it located, though? Is that the, like, the Parsonage House?
Gerald Volben, oh, no, this is the, um, I, just wait. I misspoke, it is care of Gerald Volben out of Nutcrance City. It is down here on the east side, or west, west side of town, it's where the church was taken down, where it was flooded, there's just land value. They told us to take it off of tax exempt because they wanted a value on there. And it's also, very familiar.
Isn't that that, is that guy up at the hospital?
Yeah, they have rental property.
That great or whatever?
On Sixth Avenue. I have to pull down.
They can't. That cannot be a tax exempt.
They pulled off all their tax exempt.
Has only a church or parsonage to be tax exempt, a rental house cannot.
But they, they have pulled off the tax exempt, they had to, we have definitely taken on that. I was thinking that was a.
I think you gave sixty percent, you only took forty.
I'll make pages.
I'm going to get through many, I'm so.
It's that stripped over by.
Don, you want to play?
No. I'm just, she gets to play here after you guys make that. She, she gets to be involved.
They wanted this, not a good year. Oh, yeah?
They have done that, and that would have been, otherwise it would have been like a, where it knew would have basically dropped lot. And then that would have been a year where it would have been, um, kind of positive.
How you doing, Tom?
There are a hundred and twenty-eight blocks in the Sisseton proper. And then we have all the Sisseton subdivisions. Something to look at. Like, I don't know who's got the back half of your... The packet. If you... Whoever has paid two oh eight.
I'll get that.
Okay, so if, like down on the very bottom of two oh eight, you're gonna see it in full. And then in full, it's gonna tell you the value of everything that there is. Building commercial, land residential, land commercial, mobile phone. And that's the total value of lot blocks one through one-hundred-and-twenty-eight. Then you're gonna get that on every subdivision. You'll have that same thing in full to see what the value is on that subdivision.
Why is auto-tail power exempt?
In utilities?
These are essential reassess. So we'll take another five minutes to look at this.
You didn't get me on that. Dennis knows everybody tells them.
See, I keep looking for it anyway. I realize...
I just wanted to make sure that all that number's... I don't know.
Has the evaluation changed? The process changed at all from last year?
It has not. The thing that has changed is that after we did the reappraisal, it got put on the two-thousand... Twenty-one assessment. And that's what's being appealed today. Is the twenty-one assessment. We've had... A total of twenty-eight sales this year for two-thousand-and-twenty. So it's always... You always involve your sale. And then our assessed value for those sales that has happened is two million... One thousand eight hundred and twenty-one dollars. That's what we have assessed that. Our selling price for all of these homes was two million four hundred and eighty-seven thousand three hundred and fifty. So our ratio for the town of Sisseton is at eighty... Eighty percent, according to our sales that just happened. Even with the reappraisal.
How about new building in the city of Sisseton in the last year? Any idea of where you're at with new building?
I would have to pull our building permit thing up from that.
Can you think of any now?
New homes built in the master, new not. Yeah, I know, just the last three of thirty.
And those were from three years ago? Does the company not consider a renewed area improvement from talking about it for three years? The general consensus is people feel want to build in the city. Maybe the process we're going on when people feel that they choose... When you're charging people six hundred dollars a month on addition to their home, just to live in a home? We're starting to price people out of the city. I mean, I'm paying roughly four hundred to live in my house after it's paid for. Just to be in the city. If I put that whole city in all the doors, I can definitely come down to a half. And I understand the amenities, I get it. But I'm just wondering if there's ever gonna be concern to not keep the city growing when we haven't had a new home built in three years? I think they're sending a message that says, what the hell would be built in a home in Sisseton?
And at that point, I would go to the city and I would ask, why is the levy so high in the city? Why is it one of the highest levies in the county? I don't know the answer to the levies. I don't... I don't deal with the levies. And I do know that, yes, you're right, Bill. Because the levy outside of Sisseton is thirteen thousand per thousand. And in Sisseton, owner occupied is twenty-two.
It used to be, we used to...
And in non-owner occupied, if I'm not mistaken, it's twenty-six. So it is very high in Sisseton. I understand it.
Because we used to pay more for, you know, school than city. And now this last time, last couple years, it looks like we're paying more tax dollars to the city than we are to school. Yeah, like I said, it's the city and the...
No, I'm not blaming...
I know, but I'm just saying...
I'm just saying as a whole...
You're right, yeah.
Sat down and said, we're not willing to get construction here, or we can't afford liquor. I mean, that's... So, how am I?
It is, and I haven't come across the office too to say that I can pick my hopes up in the city of Sisseton and move it to the country. Kind of create for peace. And I would save over half of my dollars. Half of my tax dollars. And I get it. City is great living. You have all the amenities, you have the water, you have the garbage, you have all your stuff. You have your streets, you have your curves, you have your infrastructure. That's something you'd have to deal with outside. If you're outside, you'd have to do all that, you know?
Well, I understand, but a lot of it is based on the evaluation of the home, correct? I mean, you take them last three homes, three years ago, and they had on there... It was gonna be the cost of living in that home, and part of that was the tax cost on a home that had an untenation. Were they all three-bedroom, roughly? Two-bedroom? Those taxes were higher than just what anything in town for a two-bedroom untenation based on... Based on assuming the county's assessment, correct? But I'm just...
And they were valued at a hundred and sixty to a hundred and seventy-five.
And what that assessment only wasn't based on, I guess solely on size, it was basically because of the year built, correct? So again, we're almost punishing these people. And then, I mean, that's not a glamorous home, I mean, it's not...
No.
It was just a...
I can try to wake sleep.
I just... I don't know how to fix it, I'm just...
Right. And I feel that the city board members here need to take that back to the city council and just to see what... What you can do differently about the... About whatever could be happening. Yeah, and I don't know... I don't know. I don't know. But that is a... That is a big thing.
Sherry, the formulas that you use though to determine a value, those formulas are dictated by Department of Revenue, are they not?
They go by our Marshall and Swift, which is an approved property or approved program by the Department of Revenue. We use that program, nationwide program that is also there. And then with that, it's the cost approach. And then we also give it the depreciation, the effective age that is there. We give it some kind of... Sometimes if it's, you know, needs an external depreciation, we give it that. We look at the house, we look at the year the house was built. We look at all the different types of conditions and qualities that are there for it. And then we plug all that information in once we're there. And we come up with the value that I got.
When they build new houses now, do they get a tax break, a five-year tax break?
Yes, they do.
Do they give you so much money before you can tie into it?
The town of Sisseton has that.
Yes.
And it's a five-year. And it applies to anybody who feels a structure that is five thousand dollars in value or more. So they would get that tax break thrown down. City depreciation. Okay, so I'm gonna pass out our first appeal. First appeal is Carl Keller. And... Yeah, I don't want...
The one you have to go on to?
No. Sorry, Don. I'll give you one after.
You get done, I...
We're sorry. I don't have to, I'll sit so fine.
Welcome to the Venture Communications Conference Service. Please enter your conference identification number. Administrator has not yet arrived. Who are the administrator? Conference administrator has joined the conference. There are two attendees on the conference call.
Good morning, Carl, is this you?
Yeah.
Hi, this is Sherry. Today with us at the appeal process, we have Chairman Dennis Jensen. We have Don Carlson, Fay Johnston, Paul Stapleton, Billy Rice, Joe Just, Lisa Stoll, myself, Tom Riedel, and Tim Zempel. Along with Don Sattler. And we have one secretary, and your name is?
Rick Delmore.
And we have Rick Delmore with us. So what we have, the commissioners and the board, I should say, has a copy of your appeal. And they have a copy of your property card that shows your house and everything in it. And I would like to... He, Carl writes, I wish to appeal the hundred-and-fifty-eight point four-four increase in value of my home on record number one-eight-two-three as listed on the two-thousand-and-twenty-one assessment on the described above property. After visiting with Carl, we asked him to go, if we could go back up to his home. He let us come back in. We did another check to make sure if we had everything, what needed to be done. And upon looking at it again, the basement is in super, super rough shape. I was not there personally when we first did the appraisal. There are eight-by-eights, literally, if you can picture eight-by-eights on the floor of the basement. Doing a crisscross pattern on the floor. Beams in the middle of the basement and more beams in the same crisscross, holding the basement walls down. So I... Then we came back to the office and we re-looked at the thing. And so we ended up just removing the entire basement value off of his property. He is just doing that to save it, his basement, the house from falling in. So I... I would like to ask Carl now if he has anything else to say about that.
No, you described that pretty good.
Okay. And so what I would like to propose to the board is to remove the basement value off of that. And bringing it down to a value of twenty-two thousand five ninety-nine. That would be removing the basement value of the seventeen thousand five fifty-two...
Twenty-two what?
Five ninety-nine.
That would be for the house, yes. That's the building, yeah. So I would like to request that.
So what would total be then?
And the land value would stay the same at four thousand sixty-six?
You get twenty-six six sixty-five?
Twenty-six six six five.
Twenty thousand dollar reduction, that's pretty reasonable.
Does our city representatives have any comment on that?
No, I agree with it.
I agree with it too. I agree with it too.
Sherry went through it, checked it out.
Yeah, we did the, we went back the second time and we, yes, we have went through. So I want to thank Carl for letting us go through it a second time through the appeal stuff so we know what was the issue for sure.
You want formal action on each one of these, Sherry, or you want to group them together?
I think so, I think so.
All right, is there board action changing that value to twenty-six six sixty-five?
Also moved.
Motion by Stapleton, is there a second to that motion?
Oh, second.
By Just, is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, motion carries. There we go.
Okay, so Carl, did we have that other house?
Yeah.
Okay, so you, the board does not have a copy for the other house because when we were visiting about that, we have a value of sixteen thousand one thirty-six and the land value at thirty-four eighty-four for a total of nineteen thousand six twenty-one. We have that recommendation that we would just keep that one as-is.
Okay.
Do you have any, do you have any comments?
No, I guess not.
Okay. So did you appeal a second property, but we don't have copies of it? Why was he appealing the second property? Because the value, he had said that the value had increased on that one too as well. But after visiting with it, we did not find that there was, we didn't get error and then that was... Did you make a second visit to the property? Yes, we did. Okay, where is property located? It is located at one oh four Second West, Second Avenue. Any other questions for me, Carl?
No, I guess not.
Okay, so then we will be sending you out some documentation within the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
All right, thank you for calling in.
Thank you.
You're welcome, have a good day.
You too.
Okay, goodbye. Our next one we have is Chad Sheedah. Oh, and I get these. Do you need a motion on that second one, Carl?
We should have a partial number or something to reference that.
Nine forty. And then we have Chad Sheedah coming, he'll be calling in, his time was set at eleven thirty.
Are you doing minutes, Lisa, who's doing the minutes, I guess?
Don is doing the official minutes.
Doing the minutes, okay. The minute should reflect that there was no action on the partial number nine forty.
This is conflicting here, he says in his cover letter that he has made no improvements to the house in the last five years, but then on one partial, he puts all-new flooring throughout the twenty-twenty-one, so how can that be?
Will that be our staff notes there, right, when you did your inspection?
Yeah, but you're saying, he said he's done nothing, but obviously he's done something to improve the value of his home. Which could certainly justify the cost of the devaluation. Do you base it on things that don't need a building permit? So floor, floor coverings wouldn't justify that, would it?
We don't know. The only thing that we do require building permits for is a structure being built or if the structure isn't there already to analyze the square footage.
But would it have an effect on the condition?
It would have, and that's why the reappraisal would need to be, should be updated periodically like it's supposed to be every five to seven years. Just because then if there is those upkeeps within the house, the condition and the quality, it would have to at that time.
I was just saying, when you're always going to change the structure, then you'd be dealing with that for city ordinance.
Right. And, and the city also requires that you're putting up a fence, they, that has to be... We don't assess that, but they require it. Trying to figure out where this house is.
Hey, you would recognize the structure next door to it. Was referred to years ago as a crooked apartment.
Oh, sure.
Yeah. Well, it's just right down here, I think the second, the second alley.
Okay, one house, yeah? Yeah.
Not on the corner, but the next one.
How much did you move back from there?
I think Van Ral was there, or, and Van Ral was there.
Yeah, and then, and then there was...
Was there Ralph, Ralph living there one time?
Yes, sir. owner of occupied? Yes. Does that reflect, I don't know, do you see that S on the bottom? N-A-D-Y-S. That S is that owner occupied. Joe, do you know that the city is putting a, it's brought a whole home?
It would be quite a long, it would be a long time. They were talking about one day, but it's going to be a few years, I think, is my personal opinion, yeah.
So at this point, it's up to Stapleton, or do you want to do it?
Yes, yeah.
Hi, Chad.
Hello.
This is Sherry, and with me we have, from the board, we will have Tom Vergelt, Tim Zempel, Dennis Jensen, Don Carlson, Fay Johnston, Paul Stapleton, Billy Rice, Joe Just, Lisa Stoll, myself, and Rick?
Delory.
Delory, I'm sorry, and then Fay Johnston, or I'm sorry, Don Sattler. I'll get all of us, I think there's twelve of us. We hold different names. So they have, the board has received all of your information that I have. It says, I'll read the letter you wrote. "I'm sending you a letter because I feel that the recent county tax assessment of my property is unlawful because I'm being assessed for more than the fair market value and more than other similar properties. I have not made any changes to my home in past five years, so therefore, there is no merit for the increase of the forty-three percent on my assessed value of my home." So I want to thank you, Chad, for letting us in for the second time when we, after your appeals, so we were able to view what we could, see what our difference is when we were out doing reappraisal to now. And you had pointed out quite a few different aspects when we were there here just on the eleventh, no, when we were there, we were just there on the sixth of April to visit with you. And so we did, you did put all-new flooring down just this year, two thousand twenty-one, due to the fact that of all the uneven flooring that is there, because when you walk down your hall, there's these little wigs and steps that I was able to feel out. You also put up all around your crown molding around your entire house due to all the cracks that were there. And all the taping was cracking on the edges also. It, it was an old granary moved in. And the carpenter that owned the place really cut a lot of corners and so therefore the deterioration of that. Is there anything else that you would like to comment on?
Yeah, keep in mind, this is an old granary moved in that's been added on to in, I think everybody knows how they have brownfield houses. All this ceiling, tape lining, they were all cracked. I had to put up crown, of course, to make all that. When I first bought the house, the floor was still unlevel, but I had to tear up all the flooring and add different layers and levels of flooring to even make it level to even walk on. The curb gutter hasn't been there, I mean, my family used to live there thirty years ago when they didn't have curb gutter there. The water runs down the road into my yard, into my wood crawl space. I fight this water problem every spring and every time it rains. This water runs between my house and the neighbor's house, goes down and pools in the alley. The neighbor had to put up sandbags so the water wouldn't run into his basement. So every time I come home, if it's melted or raining, I have to drive through puddles and puddles of water of mine. I had to bring a load of gravel in the alley to fill up the alley so I could even drive on the alley to get into my garage. I mean, I feel this house hasn't changed one bit since I owned it with some flooring.
Hey, Chad, this is Dennis, you had, you had mentioned that it hadn't changed in value at all. What, and the paper that I'm looking at doesn't really even give a purchase price. What, what value did you place on it when you purchased it?
I paid forty-five thousand dollars in line.
Okay, thanks.
And I have put, so I ripped up some carpet and some flooring, put the flooring down and put the crown up. Because I had to, because it looked like crap.
Yeah.
I mean, when they plow the roads in front of my house, you know, winter time, they plow my grass in winters. So every year I gotta replace the dirt, plant grass, and every year I deal with those chunks of concrete and tar that they... They plow up, goes by the yard because they're ripping up the actual road when they plow because it's on curb gutter.
After your second inspection, what, did you come up with a change in value, or what is your...
Yeah, we made an adjustment to the quality of the house. We increased that down. And therefore I would recommend to the board a difference of sixty-five, it was valued at sixty-five eight thirteen to a value of forty-seven three forty-six. Would be my recommendation to the board. That would be the building value, and then the land value is five thousand eighty-two.
I feel the land value is equal to the...
And we have three lots on it, and what we have in that area of town, we have, it's sixty-six effective front feet. And then we have that value at seventy-seven dollars per front foot, so that's how I come up with fifty eighty-two.
Do those, do those lot values take into account curb and gutter and sidewalk, any of that sort of thing?
No, not really, no. But if you have a cement driveway, that, you take that into consideration, correct?
There is no cement driveway.
No, but I'm just, you know, we do do that.
I can't pour a lap up front because the water runs to my house.
It seems, seems to me a lot value would, would be enhanced if it did have curb and gutter versus one that doesn't. And as well as a sidewalk, which I don't think you have a sidewalk there either, do you, Chad?
I have a sidewalk that goes in front of my house, yes.
Yeah, okay.
But that would be my... That sidewalk would go north and south or east and west, north and south?
Yes.
Okay, I see it on the picture, sorry.
You, Paul, do you have any comments on that, on that lot value of five thousand eighty-two dollars?
So there's no difference between one that has curb and gutter and one that doesn't, or lot value?
If there is, it's, it's slight.
Is there anybody that's more than lot value considering these?
Yeah, it's up to, it's up to four.
My thing is, how am I supposed to maintain my house? Make it nicer and, and, so it's, it's pretty up front, which you guys want, town. When I have no curb and gutter, I don't dare do anything structurally in case I have, if I have curb and gutter. I'm not gonna have water running my crawl space fifteen times a year. I mean, I think you guys have talked about all this water issue, like that bird in the back alley is playing many times. And you can drop on my alley and see there thirty sandbags fit in there because you don't want water in the yard.
If you would, if the board would do a twenty percent off of the land, it would be as well for four thousand fifty-five.
You gonna make a motion on that, Joe, or whoever wants to make a motion?
What was that? It was on the total value fifty-one eleven, I don't know.
Let's back up this up.
I'm on the east side. I have three lots, just like he does. I have curb and gutter. My lot value is $5,082. Yeah, my lot doesn't even compare to his. I don't have any of those issues. So you just, so much for lot or square foot or what was that again?
It's probably square foot. Based on, based on a running foot, right? So three lots is 66, right?
Yes, 22 by 125.
And if I've got this right, about $1,082 divided by 66 is $77 per foot. I'm not an appraiser. You people are appraisers. We've listened to realtors do brokers' opinions. A bare lot is not going to bring the same value as one that has curb and gutter.
Well, that's true, right?
Okay, you know where I live.
Yes.
I mean, there's like huge difference.
In terms of brain age.
And guys, look to the left, look to the right of my house.
Yeah, you've got a blighted, you've got a blighted building next to you. So is what you're saying, are you in favor of reducing it? Are you not in favor?
I'm in favor of reducing it. I mean,
Very good. Is that your motion, Joe?
I'd like to reduce it to 4,065 to the land value.
All right. And how about Sherry's recommendation of 47, 346? Is that part of your motion as well?
I think so.
So we come up with a grand total of 51,411. Is that math correct?
No.
All right. Is there a second to Joe's motion to reduce that value to 51,411?
I'll second it.
Second by Paul. Any further discussion from the board? All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. All right, there you are, Chad.
So Chad, you, go ahead.
Go ahead. Sherry, what are we up for a total price then with the land included?
The land included is going to be
51,411.
$51,041.
I think that's fair, Sherry.
Okay, so thank you for calling us in and thank you for calling in and taking time out of your day. You will be receiving notices of this within the next couple of weeks. All right, Chad?
All right, thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Okay, good. Bye.
This question, in your Marshall Swift program, evidently there's nothing in the program to help you adjust, for say, the land.
Or the cost approach.
Based on.
So that will be something that we will look at again to make sure that we know where we're at. We won't do that.
Pardon me? Where is that at? Just right down the street. Yeah. Just before you get to the Chestnut. No, 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 no. It's just right, right up down the street.
I'm going to make a motion to raise the valuation a little bit.
You can. Could you just pick up please? I believe I want to hear it like that.
Thank you.
Hi, good morning, Dave. Gordon Nielsen, I've got Mike and Christie Chino whenever you guys are ready for us.
Oh, hi Gordon. I'm sorry, I didn't hear the phone beep in.
We just beeped in.
Okay, so I'm Sherry and thank you for calling in today. We have Tom Vergelt, Tim Semple, Dennis Jensen, Don Carlson, Fay Johnston, Paul Stapleton, Billy Rice, Joe Just, Lisa Schoe, myself, Don Sattler, and Rick DeLore. Did I say their names?
Yes.
Okay, so that's what we have with us today. What I would like to do is first read the appeal letter. Everybody has a copy of the appeal letter. Dear Mrs. Amber, I'm sending you this letter because I feel the recent county, various county tax assessment of my property is unlawful because we have been assessed more than the fair market value and more than similar properties. Unfortunately, the details regarding my property worth and the tax assessment are unfair, unjust, and without merit per SDCL 10-6-1.3. Robert Tony currently assesses value higher than the appraisal market value of my home on a third-party mortgage appraisal conducted by New Real Estate for Dakota Bank on 9/30/2020. The appraised value of my home set by the New Real Estate and Dakota Bank is $290,000, which includes all property structures located at Lot 9 in the south 45 feet of Block 10, of Block 3 in Lot 1 of Fader subdivision 2nd Edition. I want to make it very clear that no changes have been made to the home since our last county assess, county tax assessment. The amount of the increase is unfair, unjust, unlawful, and without merit. The assessed value should be set at 85% of actual appraised market value or $246,500. With accordance of, with the standard set by the Self-According Department of Revenue, market value is the amount the property would probably sell for if sold on the open market. We have retained Gordon Nielsen as legal counsel for the purpose of this appeal. So I wish to, thank you for calling in. I do want to make note for the record that we had contacted, well, first of all, Mike and Christie set up an appointment with me. We went through the property card in my office and we did find an error on the property card on our adjustment that I had added a finished basement and it is not a finished basement. It is just a basement, an unfinished. So at that, I would, I took the value off of that as my error in that. And so that brought the value of the home to 257,974. After setting up an appointment with Mike and Christie to go back to the house and do a revisit, we were denied of that access in there at that second time because they said, no, they never returned to us. So at that point, that would be my recommendation is that we remove the basement finish and the total for the house would be 257,974 due to our assessor error. So then Gordon, Mike, Christie, do you have anything to add?
So would that be the total assessment including the house and the land or would that be just the, just the house, Sherry?
That would just be the house, the land value we have at $12,325. So 12,3
And there's an accessory building.
325. That's, that's included with this number, our figure. 7,974. So a total of $270,299. And like I said, that was out of my error on adding that basement finish. So I, I thank Christie and Mike for bringing that to my attention. So Gordon, do you have any other questions, any comments?
Yeah, let me just do one thing here. So my question, Sherry, would be then, I think Mike, did it provide you at least with a summary of the real estate appraisal that was conducted in September? It's a date of September 30th of 2020. And that certified appraiser determined the opinion of value to be $290,000 with the, with the land and the improvement. So, so based on the number that you just discussed, the $270,299, that looks like he would be then, Mike and Christie would be paying taxes based on 93% of the fair market value. And I guess my question would be, would that be equitable and uniform when compared to other properties, similar properties in, in his area, 93% of the fair market value? I mean, if the other people in that neighborhood are paying 93% of the fair market value and if the value that you placed on it is less than the appraised value, then, then it would comply with South Cora law because it can't be more than your appraised value as you know. If the other people are paying 85%, if their property is assessed based, based on 85% of the fair market value, then perhaps we're paying too much. Our proposal would be 85% of the appraised value and that, that number would be 246,500. For the assessment, for the total. And that would be 85% of the appraisal and that's our position. We think that would be uniform when compared with other properties in the area.
Gordon, any comments?
Well, if the other properties haven't been appraised, I wouldn't really know what they're presented.
I visited with, in fact, New Real Estate was in my office this morning just for an FYI. And we were visiting and he brought up this property and he said if this property was anyplace else other than Sisseton, it would be a $350,000 to $400,000 home. So the valuation does take into effect the location of the property. It does take into effect.
If it was a simple emoji, it'd be a million dollars.
So what, he, he said that he did not find any, could use any comparables that were related in the area, he said, within city of Sisseton. So just, I mean, it's entirely up to the board on the recommendation that is at hand. I, I did take the basement finish off. The quality of the home is a 3.5. It's an average good home. The condition of the home is an average home. The floor, floor area is 2276 square feet. Its effective age is 10. We have 14 plumbing fixtures in it. According to our standard report, our Marshall Swift that we use everywhere in the whole county, this is how we come up with that, that figure, so.
Can I just ask?
Yes.
If we're using the 85% and we've got a true, what we believe a true and accurate appraisal, right? What better do we have to judge it on, right, than this right here? I mean, this guy went out, spent the money, had an appraisal. We've got an appraisal number. And if the county is to set the 85% of the actual appraised market value, what better number do we have to base it on?
Well, just an FYI is that 85% is supposed to be our lowest percent. We can go as high as want. We are not supposed to be above the full and true. We are supposed to be between the 85% and the full and true. So if everything was at 85, that would be the perfect, the perfect.
Okay, do you have a number in mind though that you plan to use as a general whole? I mean, do you, do you plan to use 85 or do you plan to use 95? I mean, what is our total of the whole?
Okay, so just taking for instance, that number fluctuates every single year because we have 2020 sales here that I'm basing off of our appraisal. After doing the appraisal, putting everything out there for the town of Sisseton, we have 28 sales that have happened that are good sales in the city of Sisseton that have reflected, they're on the open market, they're hands, are arm link transaction, and our assessed value for 28 properties, even after doing appraisal, is $21,821. The selling price is $2487,350. So even with our appraised value, which I have to use these current sales, that's only putting it to 80%.
Yeah, so on that door is made of all sale, my understanding, oh yeah, my understanding that, you said door is made of all, correct, Sherry?
I did not name, say a name, no. I said I have 28 sales in 2020 and those sales, our assessment value is at $21,821. The selling price for those same 28 places is $2487,350.
So everything is selling for more than its appraised.
Right, right. And so our total is at an 80% factor. So at 85%, these are telling me that each individual house is not at 85%. And so we have to keep doing adjustments on it because we are by law supposed to be 85 or above. So 85%, if that's what the board chooses to do, this is just information given out here. If the board chooses to do 85% for Mike and Christie's at the 2,000, or 246,500, their value based on the fee simple real estate, their assessment, or their appraisal, I mean, that's what the board would go with. I'm recommending that we remove the valuation of the basement finish and according to the accurate square footage that we have, the condition and the quality of it, the effective age, and the plumbing fixtures that we have in there, according to our Marshall and Swift report, which is by law, what we have to use, the one of the two, Marshall Swift or Vanguard, that based on the cost approach, this is what it would be. So it is up to the board to make the decision of whatever they do. I'm just giving you my recommendations. And you have in front of you the recommendation that in the letter from Mike and Christie that with New Real Estate, he appraised it at $290,000, which includes all property and structures. So that value there at the 290 would be the full and true according to the fee simple real estate agent assessor.
Sherry, can I ask one question? That's all I have.
Yeah.
So in 2020, there was 28 sales, right?
Yes.
Have you, have you looked to see what, so that once they're sold, we then establish what the, for the most part, the fair market value is? When we look at the sale price compared to the assessment, where are we at on that? Are we, are we higher than 85%? Are we lower than 85%?
We are lower at right now. Right now, we are, we are lower this year in 2020 on these sales at 80%. Last year, we were higher on this same report. We were at like a 90. We were at like a 93.
And then, so that's our argument. If on those 28 sales, the average is 80% based on the fair market value to assessment, based on your recommendation, Mike and Christie would be paying 93%. So on 28 sales, unless I'm missing something, on those 28 sales, the average is 80%, and your recommendation is for Mike and Christie to pay 93%. Now, I understand that 93% is less than the fair market value, but also, under our constitution, it has to be equitable and uniform when compared to everybody else. So on 28 sales, it's 80%, it's not going to be uniform for Mike and Sisseton to be paying 93%. Now, I know it takes time to get everybody equitable, but we were supposed to do this assessment, you know, every year, but for purposes of this year, I think if they came in at 85%, it would still be more than the 28 sales that you have record of. So our position is, and whatever the board decides is fine, but our recommendation, based on the numbers, would be 246,500. We'd be fine with that, and I think that would be uniform when compared to the comparable sales from the last year. So one other thing I want to just quick say, guys, this is our third appeal in 10 years, because for all those 10 years, there's been mistakes made on taxation of our properties that the board has come back and said, hey, we made a mistake.
I think they'll need to make a recommendation on this, but I guess some food for thought for the board to consider would be the adjusted value that Sherri came up with of 257,974. We've had a debate on the value of lots, on front footage, curb versus no curb, and so forth, and if you were to reduce that front footage to $77 a front foot, which currently being assessed at $85 a front foot, would bring it down another $1,000, so the lot would be $11,165, which I'm not sure, I was thinking that those lots were selling in the neighborhood of $18,000 or so. But regardless, at $11,165 would be 62% of 18,000. The grand total would be 269,139, just some food for thought there.
Well, the land out there, how did you assess that? $77 a square foot, or did you...
The land out, what I mean, or what? Out in that subdivision, it is valued at $85 a front foot, he's got 145 effective front feet.
How many front foot?
145.
145.
There is urban gutter.
So I'm just curious, why is that based on $85 per front foot, and in town it appears to be 77? I'm just curious.
Well, that is a newer subdivision, it has that kind of stuff, I mean, because that's just the way we broke it down into different subdivisions.
And I just like to note, I don't think the street goes in front of all of the property. The street stops.
No, the street would always stop in our driveway. It doesn't even go to the edge of our driveway. And the majority of the footage of our property has milk street with weeds and grass growing in front of it.
See, I don't know if I can tell from the picture, but so you're saying you don't have 145 feet?
She's saying she don't have 145 feet of curb and gutter, right?
No, we have urban gutter, we just have no, the urban gutter goes the whole way, but it goes a ways, but then there's no pavement or anything, it's just weeds and gravel going up where there normally should be a street.
Let me rephrase, I don't know if it's gravel, it's clay with a little bit of something on it.
Yeah, and lots of... Like, to get to our back shed, we have to drive on now, because it's not even maintained at the tree.
If the rain, the money, we can't even prop it. It's not reliable.
Well, Bill, you're neighbors to them. Is this, is this 145 feet of curb through here?
Well, we'd be going towards the...
Their lot size is, just because their driveway's not 145, the lot size is 145. And so you pay for the whole lot size of your front foot, you don't just pay for your driveway.
And I understand they don't have the street, but does the curb extend beyond there?
Not, not going backwards to south, right? I'm pretty sure it stops right, right about the quarries.
Because there's extra lots back there, those are Corey Deich's lots back there behind them to the south.
And I, like I said, I'm willing to base it on, I mean, it's probably one of the more accurate, non-opinionated assessments or evaluations that we have, is the appraisal. I know, like Gordy said, you're at 50%, we're at 93%. I don't think that's unreasonable at 85%, I really don't. Not when you have a fair and honest opinion of 290. That then, I guess I'll leave that for the rest of the board to decide, but that, my opinion is...
Right.
Am I making a motion over, I share the motion?
You sure can. That's your job.
I'm sorry.
I have a recommend, I make a recommendation, and the board can approve my recommendation or not.
My motion is to evaluate the property based on the appraisal of 290, bringing it down to 246,000, or 246,500, at an 85% evaluation. That's my motion.
Right, there's a motion before the board to change the value based on the valuation of a appraiser, not necessarily our director of equalization, to force, pardon me, 246,500. Is there a second to that motion?
Is that 246,500, is that on the house, or is that the whole?
That's everything, house and land.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded by Joe Just. Is there further discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Okay, I would like to thank you guys for calling in. In the next couple weeks, you will be receiving notice from us to say what the motion had been done and what the valuation had been adjusted to. So thank you, Gordon, Sherri, and Mike.
Thank you. Have a good day.
So with that, we are going to recess until 1:00, when we have Lee Aggressive and Jim Permention will be up on next, and then it will be Jim doing his appeals, and then after that, we have those two more. One is Assistant Management, which is the Dollar Store, and then we have Ashanti.
Yeah, Sherri, just, I wasn't working against you on that, I, I guess one of the ones that we actually have an actual, in my mind, of an evaluation from a source versus just working on a person, trying to say, well, my property's no real estate, and at some point, I feel that we gotta get together and keep these properties at an affordable, reasonable evaluation for people in town, and we're not gonna have one. I wasn't working against them. One thing regarding that, you know, who paid for the... Who paid for it? I'm assuming they did, in the bank. Well, yeah, a huge request. But at some point, I kind of know, my most reasonable reason was...
I'm not arguing with the paid, I'm just saying I gotta be careful of accepting.
No, I understand that. Most people aren't gonna go and spend $4,000 just come and give the company a tax unless they're paying some...
Well, if you're real estate back there.
Okay, so we'll recess until 1:00. I guess, I guess like, we'll be back at 1:00.
I'll just do my stuff right here.
Is your census, Dave?
I have no idea. I don't think so.
I don't know. I don't know, yeah. I'm gonna go talk to you.
Welcome to the Venture Communications Conference Service. Please enter your conference identification number. Administrator has not yet arrived. If you're already administrator, please enter your administrative access code now.
Oops.
The conference administrator has joined the conference. There are one attendees on the conference call.
I think so.
Okay, up now is Lee Aggressive and Jim Permention.
Do they, do they own a property together, or what's the...
The story is, is that on March 11th... Hello?
Hello?
Um, we have both Jim and Lee on the line?
Yeah, this is... This is Jim.
Okay, so, good, thanks for calling in. I was just...
Yeah, I need to say something, if you don't mind.
Okay, first of all, I'd like to introduce you to...
At 4:30 in the morning, I got a phone call, and my brother, 87 years old with a bad heart, had a heart attack and stuff down in Missouri, and I just don't have time. So I'm just gonna say, I do not agree with whatever valuations you came up with, and we'll just appeal it into court. I gotta see my brother, this is a bunch of bullshit's been going on, and I got, my brother and I are really, really close guys, okay?
Mike?
So is Tom there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, Tom, so you note that I called in, that my brother is probably dying down, down there, and I gotta go, I'm on my way to see him, and I haven't been since 4 o'clock this morning, I've been on the road and stuff, and I disagree with the valuation, then I'll appeal in a day or two, okay?
Be, be noted, Jim.
Okay, thank you, Tom. Do you guys, is there a recording of this or anything?
Um, we, up right here, we do not have one in our office. The commissioner is not recording, it is live streaming.
Okay, Tom, will you protect me, Tom?
Are you not recording, Jim? Jim Delores is here, recording.
Oh, Rick Delores? Is he in the office here? He is recording it, I guess.
Okay, so it's noted that my brother's probably dying, and I'm on my way to see him, and I can't get time for this nonsense right now, okay?
Yes.
All right, thanks for calling in, and drive safe.
Yeah. Thank you.
So Lee, are you still on the line?
Yeah, I can hear you, but not very well.
Okay, I'll take my mask down when I talk. The commissioners are here along with the county, the city board of consolidation, so I'll introduce all of us. We have Tom Vergel, Tim Zempel, Dennis Jensen, Don Carlson, Fay Johnston, Paul Stapleton, Billy Rice, Joe Just, Lisa Skoll, myself, John Sadler, and Rick Delore. And then also Jason Deitch is in here this afternoon, and he is live streaming this.
Well, I wish I was there too, because it's really hard to hear.
So the question the commission, the board had, when we, they just gave them their information, they asked if both of these people were a joint owner. And I was just in the process when you beeped in, and I was just gonna say that on March 11th, you deeded over the property to Jim of the west 80 feet of block 7 through 12, block 55 in the city of Sisseton. And so you appealed the property on March 11th, because you still owned it.
That was the day we actually sold it.
Right, and that's the day you actually appealed.
Can I talk?
Yes.
All right. I was, I was in the process of selling it, and Jim said, well, you need to appeal that, you know, and then he had talked to Don, and Don said that we should appeal it too, so that's why I appealed.
So that's why we have Lee and Jim appealing the same property.
The day of the sale is 1 o'clock, March 11th, but, you know, that was the day of the debt on it too, so...
So who owns the property on the day that's...
At, at right now, the deed was filed, like you said, on March 11th, and so actually the property belongs to Jim.
All right, so...
But both, Lee appealed it before the deed was filed, Jim appealed at that same time, and they filed the deed. So they wanted to make sure this property got into the appeal process.
Can two people appeal the same piece of property when only one of them owns it?
Well, but yeah, so they, he owned it before it got, he owned it after it got filed, so I asked Lee if he would wish to pull his appeal, and he said no, because he wanted to make sure it got in. So visiting with the Department of Revenue, we were able to, since they were both owners on that same day, transferred ownership on that same day, that both appeals could come in. And we were going to do it all on one time instead of having two separate appeals for the same property.
Yeah, I know, and that's too bad Jim has to be this way, but I wanna make my case, and then I'll let you guys discuss whatever you wanna do.
Okay, go ahead, Lee.
But reading my rights as well, at the time, I'm appealing it on both the market approach and the income approach.
What were the assessments on the other?
And I'm basing those, that statement on, in fact, that I tried to sell it for a little over two years, and I was trying to get $20,000 for the property. And I showed it, I think, five people, and, you know, visited with others besides them. Billy Rice was one of the people that looked at it. The other side of the thing is, it only generated after taxes, insurance, the water bill, it only generated about $1,000 a month. And that's without any, you know, major repairs or new appliances, whatever.
So what was the property sold for?
Approaches, I think you had over assessed it. Did everybody catch my, my stuff there?
Yep.
Yep, they all have copies of the whole thing.
Okay, like I said, I can just barely hear you, so I hope you can hear me better.
Move that down some, or...
Yeah.
Is it all the way up?
Can you hear us a little?
We're gonna have conversations, if I'll be there, I can't, I can't hear what you're saying.
Right, can you hear me better now, Lee?
A little bit, but not that great.
Okay. Well, maybe sure... Well, maybe we'll pull our mask down when we're talking, and then we'll put it back up, okay, when we're not?
Okay.
Okay, so do you have any other things, anything else, would you would like to tell the board?
Well, I don't think so, because, you know, I was just reading, you know, the handout I picked up in Don's office, and I had picked up that even before that, when I went up and paid my property taxes a few weeks before this. So anyway, I was reading my appeal process for the property owner, and based on those two... And, uh, based on those two, um, approaches for the non-agland.
Yes.
I think it was, uh, over assessed.
Okay, so something that we have not ever done on this building was ask for any income value to make sure that we would do the income approach. We done all cost approach on this value.
Yeah, I have this building, and I'll tell you guys something, you know, I have an aerial map of that property before they did the street renovation, where they, where they took out that ditch and tore out that big, uh, I don't know, mature tree. And before they did that monstrosity on the sidewalk that they just popped full of snow. But, uh, you know, there was a lot of damage down to that foundation when they tore out that big spruce tree that was right next to the building. And they leveled in that ditch, you know, to tame the, you know, the floods, whatever. But as the years have went, I've had to keep filling in that low spot where that, where that, those tree roots used to be. And you can just see how it was interconnected with that foundation. So I mean, it really sucked, you know, and I was, I bought that while that process was in, you know, already decided, and I had to live with it for a long time, so I'm glad to kinda be done with all the existing properties.
Um.
And, uh.
And Lee.
I guess that's all I have to say.
Okay, um, Mike, I have a thought, though, for the board, is that you purchased this back in two thousand and six for seventy-five thousand dollars, correct?
That was two properties.
With that, with the one right, with that little house right beside it, yes?
Yeah.
Right, and now.
There was a contract for deed, so I only had to put out a ten on my own pocket.
Right, and then.
You can't get a bank loan on something like that.
Right.
You know, so even if you did a cost approach, I mean, you can never get a bank loan on anything like that.
And so, and the deed is correct, you sold the property to Jim for five thousand dollars?
Yeah, but the foundation has been slowly caving in where they tore that tree out.
Right.
You know, and, uh, the other thing is, they use this triangular shaped device to bust up all that street. You know what I'm saying? It was on, it was like a, a, a pactor, only instead of being rounded, it was shaped like a triangle. And they, they broke up all the concrete, they broke up all the, the, the stuff, and they broke a lot of my water fights at the same time. So, I mean, like I said, you know, that damage was caused partially with whoever thought of that great idea of a sidewalk, but there's, there's no place for property owners to put their stone out in, it used to be like a wall.
Can we talk about the property?
So, uh, are you guys done with me?
Uh, yeah, unless you have anything else, then we will make a decision, the board will make a decision, and then.
I don't own it anymore, so I'll never pay taxes on it again.
Right, do you want a confirmation of what the board has made the decision on, since you did an appeal?
I haven't talked to Jim since the day I sold it to him, but, you know, I guess, you know, for my own peace of mind and self-satisfaction, my next step before Jim was to tear it down and put protest signs over there.
Okay, so, um, my question to you.
Yeah, I need a copy.
Okay, we'll send you a, uh, whatever the board would recommend doing, we'll then make sure you're included on that copy, okay?
Okay, if I get any gold in any of those holes down there, I still want part of that.
Okay, all right.
Bye-bye.
Okay, thanks for calling in.
So Sherry, you've got fifty-eight thousand three sixty-nine, is that right?
That is what we have on it, yes, we have the building itself at fifty-two seven ninety-three, um, the land value is at fifty-five seventy-six.
Does that have eighty feet, front, front feet on it somewhere?
Oh, no, no, it can't.
Sixty, no. Doesn't say five feet on it, I'm gonna look. One thirty-two by eighties, a lot size.
Yeah, consuming eighty.
Yeah, must have.
West, it's only eighty feet on the front, cause the lot is a hundred and twenty-five, so it's only eighty feet on that front.
That's what I'm saying, so if they, eighty times sixty-six, you don't.
Oh, I don't have it written down on here, but we have written it up as she does.
You did the formula backwards, it's about eighty-four and a half, if, if that works.
Eighty times sixty-six, I get fifty-two eighty.
Well, you take, you take the lots, seven through twelve, so that's six times twenty-two, you take that.
No.
And then you divide it by, uh, that eighty feet, because it's, the length flies this way, is it not the front footage?
It is, so the front footage, that building, the road runs, you know, on the south of the building, east and west.
Really, it's debatable, Maple Street is the front, or is?
This is the front, because this is the front entrance.
Right, right, and that's the south, that's on the south.
This, if, I'd have to look at the flat to make sure which ways the lots are running on that lot, they all, every.
No, they don't. Every lot in town goes one through twelve, thirteen, and on the other side, thirteen through twenty-four, it is twenty-two wide, and what, a hundred?
East and west.
A hundred and twenty-four long, and if it's a normal block.
But this is the west.
But it's not always a normal block, so I have to just, to justify, not to argue with anybody, but just to justify, to make sure that there's not a platted area out of there, because the railroad is close by here, and so they're not full wet lots, I have to look at that and make sure if that's what it is, then I could be able to tell you.
Your legal description says the west eighty feet.
Yes, so, I would have to look at the map and then figure out the front, since I don't have it written down on this card, I apologize for that. But they are sixty-six.
Probably be about right, really. Cause if there's eighty feet, that would leave another forty-some feet.
Yeah, there's another house right by it.
Right by it, to get to the alley.
So that's that extra foot, yeah.
Do you have the old card, the old card in the file?
Uh, yeah.
You have on the lot size, you have a hundred and thirty-two by eight. You know, which we have seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, you have six times.
Twenty-five lots.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two feet, yeah, if you have twenty-two feet, you have a hundred and two.
No, but you have lots.
What?
Seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, you have six times twenty-two.
A little over six lots, actually.
Yeah, so it's got to be a hundred and thirty-two feet.
And it's eighty feet wide, so you're getting, you're getting it in as nine, that before they did ninety-six point two effective front feet. And they also did the factor in the debt table.
Uh, did you look at this property?
Yes, I did.
Okay, cause I don't see anything on.
I was.
On this page as far as anything.
Because this is a commercial, and it goes off of our commercial stuff, okay? And so it is a hundred, uh, nineteen sixty square feet. It had, it's a two-story building, it has six apartments in it. Half of it for heating is electric and half is for air. And, uh, the base cost on this unit is fifty dollars and fifteen cents, the heating exterior walls comes to a total of sixty-five sixty-one. If it was going to be as new, I have a thirty-five effective age, that's what we use on this building, so it, according to our Marshall and Swift, without any external depreciation on it, it came to fifty-two seven ninety-three. I would recommend to the board to adjust, um, a twenty percent external on it, bringing it down to twenty-three thousand five sixty.
There's no base in it? No base in it, not this process.
That's what would be my recommendation. And since there was no income available to do the income approach, I did the cost.
Twenty-three, five fifty-three, did I write that down there? Yep, plus the land, fifty-five seventy-six. Plus, plus the land. Forty-nine, one thirty-eight.
Twenty-nine, what?
One thirty-eight. Six times what it sold for.
So that would be my recommendation, unless you wanted to make any further comments.
Any input from our city?
I'll make a motion out of it. I mean, if you, if you're asking for a motion in the table, then, you know, how about you go, whatever, you go with that, okay?
Has motion been made to reduce that?
The twenty-nine, one thirty-eight, am I correct?
Twenty-nine, one thirty-eight, that includes the building and the land, yeah, okay. Okay, motion by Stapleton, is there a second to that?
One second.
Joel, second, Joel, any further discussion?
I, I have a question, I said, he said he sold it for five thousand dollars, he tried to sell it for two years before he got a five thousand dollar bid on it. He's, I don't know if he was serious when he said he was about ready to tear it down. I, I question whether twenty-nine thousand dollars is too much for it, if it was, I mean, at the reduction. I mean, is it?
It probably should be torn off.
If one of the units is unrentable, because the floor is so off, damage to the floor, I mean, it cannot be, uh.
Would have been, in, in the last conversation we had about these, uh, just before the lunch break, we, we took that assessor's valuation, as honest as got truth of what that property was worth, and, and Billy, your comment was, what could be more, more valuable than, than a situation like that, I think what could be more valuable is what he actually sold it for, here in this case, it's five grand, I just. And he bought, and he bought it for, and he bought it for seventy-five thousand dollars in two thousand and six.
Well, when I went through and looked at it, I, I looked at it more than.
Is that bad?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't give him a five hundred, ever. And only because of liability, I, I don't know the building's story, at all, um, I'm not gonna disagree with you, I mean, at some point, Joel.
But, and, and I, and I do, I mean, I follow, I follow the rules, and I do that, do what needs to be done. That's the way I've been taught, that's the way I've been shown how to do it, but I know there's always room for improvement. And so that's what, why we bring appeals to the board, is to do this kind of stuff.
And, and not faulting you for following the law and the forms, I mean, if you follow the forms, then the valuation should be what it is. But like he said, if he goes in, that guy who owns and rents, uh, property, uh, and looks at it and walks away, doesn't even want a bid on it, I mean, that, that says something, I think that maybe this property is such terrible shape that, that it's not even worth the reduced twenty-nine thousand dollar valuation.
I'm telling you, the Department of Health should be involved. But that's another case. But I'm just saying that, yes, there is, there is issues with this building, so I wouldn't.
That's all I had to say, I mean, you get the first and the second, so.
Is there further discussion? If the motion fails, um, we will, uh, revisit, we revisit, so we have a motion and a second on the table. And all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
The noes have it, so the motion fails. Now, you wanna propose a different value?
Yeah, I, I guess I would propose the five thousand dollars he paid for it. Well, let me ask you a question, I, I, he said after he paid all his expenses, that, that generated a thousand dollars a month, so he's saying that's, that was his rent on the property, every pays taxes, insurance, uh, water, sewer, whatever else he paid, insurance, whatever, so I guess it should be worth at least twelve thousand dollars, if you get twelve thousand dollars rental off this place, every pays his expenses, so I have to propose twelve thousand dollars.
And, and does that?
If, if I was correct in assuming what I just stated.
Does that include the land as well?
Yeah, to me, it's the whole package, yeah.
Okay, so then we're at, uh, the land value, which data's, what she's at, fifty-five seventy-six, is that right? Cause Sherry needs some hard numbers, right?
Five, five, seven cents.
Well, if that ties into the twenty-two dollars we've been using on all these other properties, I would say, yeah. The two together, I don't think she can see.
So that brings your building value down to sixty-four twenty-four. If you're, if you're, the land, the same, what, what would that be?
Yeah, I guess I'd need a couple of, I mean, uh, is it even worth that bill?
Well, and here's the difference between what I was saying with, with earlier property and this, is I'm not professional, obviously, to phrase that.
No.
And I do think the county's gonna wanna be careful to make sure people aren't doing things the wrong way, saying, I just gave you five thousand cash.
Well, okay, but that's what I said, if you can just get me twelve thousand dollars of income off it.
And I don't remember what we was even asking, like you said, I think Jim's standards and my standards are gonna be completely different.
Sure, I understand.
So, i- i- I think maybe somewhere in between what Sherry had and, and what they're claiming they've gave, if that's what it is, is, is fair. I, I think anywhere near fifty is, I, I, again, based on what the valuation is, but it is, that's all there is. And I think anybody walking around with a couple of excited, probably, would be able to say, right? So, I just, I don't wanna set a precedent, say, either, for, and I just gave you much cash on the deal, well, let's all say what it is, so.
But is it?
Somewhere in between there, I think, or, you know, sorry, not fifty, what was her, between the twenty-three and the twelve thousand.
Twenty, twenty-nine, was it, twenty-nine?
If, if it was twelve thousand, it would be sixty-four twenty-four for the building. And fifty-five seventy-six for the land.
And that's your total of what, twelve thousand?
Twelve. Is that your motion?
Sure.
Okay, motion by Carlson to value building and the land at twelve thousand, is there a second for that?
One second.
Okay, Bill, thank you. Further discussion? All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, that motion carries.
So Jim has the right to come back on that then, or, I mean, you don't have any, what's what?
Uh, yes, okay, so, um, would you, yeah, we could go through all of his properties today? He's got.
He's appealing all of those?
Yes, this is all Jim.
Okay.
And, or we can set up another timeframe with him for next week or the fourth. And the fourth is our last day of conference board. And we would have to have, you know, reasons that are consolidated and come back on another day, or we wish to go ahead. He did comment, and we all heard it, that, um, no matter what our value is, he's going to take us to court. So we could just go ahead with this as now, and then give him the opportunity to bring it back in top next week, if he's around, or whatever the option is, it's up entirely to you, it's not up to me. Um, it doesn't, according to regulation, it doesn't have to be held up on the same date as the commissioner meeting. It could be set up on any day, it could just be a special equalization, or that would be here to the best of knowledge, that's the way I think I understand them. So, um, this is his.
How many properties are there he's appealing?
We, he is appealing, um, nine on his own.
The same ones we've already looked up, more?
Yes, yes.
That's a thick package, huh?
So that is, if we want to go through them, we can, I'll make my recommendation and then we can.
I guess we got half an hour.
We have until two o'clock is our next one, so let's make use of the half hour and start reviewing this.
And, um, right. Right. So with all of his, we did contact, reached out to Jim to have us do, after he had applied for his reappeal, we did reach out to him, we did ask to do a review because that is something that we need to do is after the appeal, is to go out and check things out again, to make a double check, to make sure we have everything right. Um, he did not return our call, he did not return a letter saying that he would allow us to do any of that kind of stuff. So he, he did not, we did not get back into the properties a second time. So record number, the first one, if we want to go through them.
Just out of curiosity, did you mail your correspondence, return receipt requested? So you're, so you're.
We did not do the.
You're confirmed that he actually got the letter, but you didn't do that?
We did not do a respond receipt, no. We did not send anything certified or any of that nature to them. We never did it to anybody.
Maybe that would be a good idea then.
Yes. We will do that in the future. Okay, so record number four, four six six, the first one on sheet. This one, as you see, um, it's south half of lot nine. Can you put these in this same order? Oh, then I didn't.
First one, I got eight-four-two-six.
Eight-four-two-six. I'll change mine so you guys don't have to change yours.
Where do I find, where do I find that?
Record number.
Okay, thank you. There you go, Jim.
Eight-four-two-six. Okay, as you see on the front, it, this one, it says, per two thousand and eighteen Supreme Court, two-nine-two-nine-four, total value is eighteen thousand dollars is what the Supreme Court had valued that back in eighteen. After we got reappraisal, we had it up to thirty-seven. So with this, we've, um, we've made an addition or exemption to this as that we, um, gave all of his properties an external depreciation of twenty percent. And at that point, they are classified as badly worn and affair. This had, this one specifically has nine hundred square feet. Um, it has only the five plumbing fixtures. It does have that detached garage. So, uh, this has a basement in it. Um, and to, hm? Oh, not all, okay. So with this one, we did do that twenty percent, uh, external on it. So I would recommend that this value be dropped to eighteen thousand seven sixty-five, and I'm only talking, um, building value.
So the Supreme Court said the value of just the house went from thirty-seven eight to eighteen thousand, the total property went from, I'm sorry, the house is, the structure's thirty-three.
Right, and that structure, according to the way we have it on our standard mark report when we did reappraisal, we had everything the same. We did bring the condition down, I, we sold, we had it at a two-five and a two-five for quality and condition, we removed the condition down to a two, to a badly worn, and then we added that twenty percent depreciation off of it.
My question is, the eighteen thousand dollars that the Supreme Court said this was worth, is that, is that just the structure, is that the house and the property?
That's everything.
Okay, so if the Supreme Court said two years previous it was worth eighteen thousand dollars and he won that case, how can we say it's worth, how could we have said it's worth thirty-seven eight at that time, you set the assessment?
Um, this was one of those that, and the Supreme Court case was one of those six that the outside appraiser or real estate agent had made that adjustment to.
Right.
And our stuff was not counted in there. And so at that point, he only made adjustments on the six. And so with the reappraisal that we did, according to the Marshall and Swift, it brought it to that thirty-three thousand.
But shouldn't we have just thrown that out when the Supreme Court said, no, you guys lost, the valuation's eighteen thousand dollars? It should have been something that says, don't use that chart again because it shouldn't be eighteen thousand dollars.
But then if I'm not, let me.
Right, but we didn't get this.
We did till after we were.
Okay, all right, all right, okay, that's all I was looking for.
I was just looking for. We just thought we'd put that on in March or.
This, we got the Supreme Court case back after assessment.
Okay, all right, all right.
Sherry, you've got seventy-seven dollars per foot on this, on this property? And that dilapidated apartment building, we had sixty-six dollars a foot. Is that right?
Yes.
All right. Explain to me, you know, so far we've seen sixty-six, seventy-seven, and I understand the eighty-five in the new development, but.
I could see maybe way back when, before the city did all that work there, with that key ditch and everything like that, maybe it was worth, you know, sixty-six. But now with the sidewalks and the, you know, it should be worth seventy-seven over there. I mean.
I think that's a different part of town.
Yeah. So we, we have sixty-six, we have seventy-seven, we have eighty-five, we have a hundred and twenty-five, and we have ninety-nine. And then we have some that are, um, square footage in town at thirty-five census square foot. We have the industrial park out at a hundred and twenty-five.
There's going to be some continuity, something.
Well, I think you have some discretion, don't you, on what, this, this is a curb and gutter lot?
I believe he's got a curb and gutter.
This is a curb and gutter lot?
Yeah.
He doesn't know.
Okay. All right.
Seventy-seven.
Seventy-seven should be accurate then, yeah. Okay. Uh, if you were to leave that land value at forty-two thirty-five and take Sherry's recommendation of eighteen seven sixty-five on her house, you'd have twenty-three thousand combined total. I don't know what kind of shit the foundations in, but that, that house would easily sell for twenty-three thousand dollars on the open market, easy.
You got that done.
But I guess my question would be, if, if the Supreme Court says, well, with eighteen thousand dollars, how, how did it increase by five thousand dollars over two-year period? Is the market that strong? I mean, I'm asking the question, I don't know.
Bill, you watch the, you watch the sales here in town? Is that, is that overvalued?
Right now, the sales are going to be high. There's no doubt about it. Even if you put a twenty percent, I believe appraisal beyond twenty-three K, which would be what we're up playing on, is five thousand, give or take, you're still at twenty-eight thousand, and I don't think you have trouble selling a decent, and I've not been inside, but I have moved snow here, I believe, and seen it, I believe it's high enough. Probably twenty-three K is a solid value on the line at all.
Normally it's dangerous to assume things, but I think if you did a broker's opinion today, the eighteen would be unrealistic.
All right, well, that's, as long as we, as long as we can justify, I guess I don't have problems with it.
Which I agree with you because I worked in that house and used to call it your old part of the key house down there years ago.
Okay.
And it was, and it was a nice basement, very nice house. At the time it was kept up to that was about fifteen years ago, maybe. But I think it's a pretty nice house. Is that the garage included with it?
Yeah.
Boy, I tell you, that's, it's pretty low, like, fifteen thousand, that's my opinion. That's the Supreme Court ruled on it, huh?
Oversized two-story garage, it looks like.
Right.
You couldn't build that garage for thirty thousand dollars a day.
The garage is seven hundred and sixty square feet.
Yeah, twenty-four by thirty-two.
Thirty thousand dollar garage, easy.
I don't think that's all reason.
All right, we need a motion.
We just talked about comparing those twenty-eight cities, that's probably like one or two years.
Somebody care to make a motion on the value of that?
What do you say, what do I?
Twenty-three, based on, based on our numbers that we're hearing?
Bump it up?
Or increase it?
Yeah, it says they bump it up, or whatever.
Whatever.
I thought we're like twenty-five thousand, that is, or maybe, I'll be different, but.
Okay.
I'll go twenty-five.
Okay.
Maybe twenty thousand seven sixty-five?
Are we leaving the?
For that building block?
Are we leaving the land the same then?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Twenty thousand seven sixty-five would be the number? All right. That's for the structure, and then the land is forty-two thirty-five. Okay, there's a motion by Stapleton? Is there a second to that? Like Johnston? Further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, that motion carries.
The next one we have is record number five-nine-two-nine. The west sixty-two point five of the south half of lot nineteen, and the west sixty-two point five of the north half of lot twenty, south half is twenty, lots twenty-one, three, four block, I need to. So we come up with land value on this property at the seventy-fourty. There's also one at the Supreme Court, um, and they granted twenty thousand for it. With the new appraisal, we have a total value of twenty-nine eight thirty-three. This is.
We don't really have a condition on it, but I see under a field notes, you know, upstairs wall, paving in, seating, laking, spot.
We have this as a quality two and condition two, so those are badly worn and fair. And then we also have this one with a total basement and a basement garage. There is a basement garage and.
What is a basement garage, like tuck-under?
Yep.
Oh, okay.
And? We have a thousand ninety square feet. So we had that valued at twenty-one, the building at twenty-one three sixty-three, and adding a twenty percent external on to that, um, that brought that down to fifteen five fifty. And that would be my recommendation.
Total, plus the land value?
Plus the land value, eighty-four seventy.
Those two combined would be twenty-four thousand and twenty dollars?
So just out of curiosity on this one, then, I understand why we do up and down values on homes, or how come the land value went up on this, was there some improvements outside city streets and others? We don't, we call eleven hundred bucks per acre on the land value from twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-one?
We've got what, six lots? Uh, Marshall lots, the west sixty-two point five, but that'd be twenty-two lot six.
Was it, is that the first time we took that unit value of the seventy-seven nine of the footage, is that right? It is, okay. Sorry, I didn't capture, I wasn't paying attention from the corner of the seventy-seven. I assumed that it was what the seventy-three, seventy-two was going with the one, you went with the seven down.
Right.
Okay.
There's a motion to approve that, that twenty-four, twenty dollars by Carlson. Is there a second to that motion?
No second.
Okay, Joe, thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, motion carries.
Sixty-five thirty-six.
This house is that one that's sitting down the street here on the corner?
Two, or two-fourteen Fourth Avenue East?
That used to be a really, really nice residence inside.
No, okay, I should have taken photos on here. It makes a big difference, huh?
It had character.
Could have had that on here before.
There's three of them right over there, just.
Yeah. Crowe, sure. Love you all.
It used to be Jim Pearson, right, but Crosby, I'm, I'm going back to yours.
George Crosby, like, yeah, Jim York, yeah, he did live here.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a nice, all the time work on that, for everybody, for a few kids.
We have a thousand eighty square feet. We have a basement of seven hundred and twenty square feet. We have the basement remarks, our rock, fake board walls. There is a detached garage of six thirty-eighth on it. And then our show notes, we do have that quarter very empty.
Detached garage must be in back.
They haven't shown on the drawing.
Right there, detached garage.
No, nothing on the drawing.
Right to the south of the house.
South of the house?
Yeah. We had a house in the hope we just got done talking about.
Yeah, because this is right next door to the house.
Yeah.
There can't be a garage there.
Yeah, there is.
Keep it in back?
Pearson's built that out of their leftover rook panels that came off of the housing twenty-seven years ago, right in between those two properties.
And you just don't see it from the?
You don't, it doesn't show up in the photo, no. It just didn't left.
Uh, number seven, condition, what do you consider it?
Is there a little flat drawing off then? Should you have a garage on there?
It just, they just had missed that, you never.
But it, it is in your file there? It is in your file?
No, it's not written, no. What you have is exactly what I have. Because they, we will make it as no, if something has to add a garage drawing on to our.
Well, they don't necessarily draw all the building.
Well, normally you don't.
I said we don't necessarily draw every shed or whatever on there.
I said, we don't necessarily draw every shed or whatever on there.
This would, yeah, but we will make.
Twenty-nine garage should be drawn on there, I would think.
Absolutely, yeah, that was.
We will make sure that it.
Those records were subpoenaed. You want to see that?
I might drive by there, 'cause I.
It's overgrown with trees, no, it has a lot of trees kind of growing, but it's kind of on the south side of it.
Dennis, is that where Jim used to live?
Jim, yeah, Jim's old house, Jim Pearson. That garage was on the south side of it. I remember when they built that.
So I have it valued at twenty-four nine seventy-two and with a twenty percent appreciation, I would recommend it going down to twenty thousand eight twenty-three.
That's with the garage?
That is with the garage. And the.
How, how long?
It, I wasn't actually at this house this year, um, I don't know.
Twenty-five and eight dollars?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five thousand and eight dollars.
Let's see, where does it say? Detached garage fair in nineteen ninety-three, it was good, good, good condition back in ninety-three, ninety-two.
Do you go for the two-story garage or one-story garage?
It's six hundred and thirty-eight square feet.
Twenty-nine, that must be two.
All right, so here's the market survey part, so here's where the house sits, here's where that little shed is, and here's where the garage sits. And this is north.
Yeah.
So based on your recommendation, Sherri, are you coming up with twenty-five thousand and eight dollars combined? Structures and land?
Yes. The land is forty-one eighty-five. Forty-four sixty-six.
Oh, we need that, we need a motion to approve whatever the board wants to do here.
I'll make the motion to lower it though.
Okay, that'd be twenty-five zero zero eight. Is there a second to that?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Paul. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, motion carries. Okay, Sherri, now, forty-four sixty-six.
This is the one and a half story. It's a condition two, quality two. It's eleven hundred and seventy square feet. With twenty-seven two eighty-two. I would recommend the twenty percent appreciation external to bring down to twenty-one three fourteen.
Of the house and garage?
Yes.
Twenty-one plus six, fifty-nine twenty-nine. That would, that would be a total of twenty-seven thousand four forty-three. Is that the right number?
Twenty-three two fourteen.
Twenty-one three fourteen and five fifty-nine twenty-nine.
Let me do it.
Twenty-seven two forty-two.
Twenty-seven two forty-three, okay. Twenty-seven, two forty-three. Joe, I remember when that house sold for in the sixties, wasn't it? Isn't that right?
Yeah, that's the let go for fifty-seven or something like that.
Yeah.
Garage was all nicer case back then. Got the whole house with that, cool.
Yeah. Lurkey, lurkeys. You bought it in lurkeys, okay.
Just work downstairs in the extension office when it was down here.
How does the board feel about that?
We're beating ourselves, aren't we?
Good to have some history around here.
Yeah, you couldn't even build that garage for that price.
No.
That's true. So using those numbers, uh, you come up with twenty-seven two forty-three.
To me, it seems a little steep compared to the twenty thousand dollars.
Um, the Supreme Court did do a no change, wait, sorry, I was going to cut wrong. Yep, you're, they did a twenty thousand on this one.
We're only off by thirteen hundred dollars. Or did they, they factored in land? Oh, yeah.
Yeah, total value, so, seven thousand, seven thousand dollar difference.
Okay, yeah.
Two years to the appreciation, right?
You're saying, yeah.
Well, the Supreme Court in two thousand, twenty-nine thousand two hundred and ninety-four.
No, that's the court case.
Case number.
That's our court case number.
So what was the two thousand eighteen value then?
Twenty thousand.
Oh, what, it's pre-propriated, twenty thousand, yeah.
What was that?
Was that the broker's opinion of twenty thousand?
Yeah, I think they all were, yeah.
In two thousand eighteen, we had thirty-five three forty-six on it. Only G brought it down to twenty-seven, or kept it the same as what we had at county board, so it had thirty-five three forty-six. Is where it was stayed at. And then, um, the Supreme Court after assessments were sent out this year had changed it to twenty.
Twenty thousand, do you think?
Yes, total value.
What's this house look like?
Lisa, you were in this house. You could ask Lisa, she was in this house. She actually did the reappraisal on this house.
It did change the square foot, so the square foot did go up compared to what it was before, 'cause not all of us had the upstairs on it.
So square.
So that won't make a difference to the value.
The square foot is increased from.
Well, if you had a total of eleven seventy, living area, and first floor is eight seventy-nine, the difference would be the upstairs.
Yeah, so before the square footage was nine hundred and ninety-eight and we increased it to eleven seventy, that's quite a bit of different square footage. So that would make a difference in the.
Some of the square foot was there on the top, but not all of it, and it's, it's not done as a two-story.
It's done as a one and a half story according to the way we have to calculate stuff. And so then your total living is eleven seventy, your first, your main floor area is eight seventy-nine. There are four bedrooms in there.
I don't know if this makes a difference, you know, by the time you drive away to the black.
Oh, wow. The black box.
It is just about two o'clock, and if the board action wants to happen on this property, fine, if not, we're gonna have to move on to the Sisitin management that's scheduled for two o'clock, so. What, what are the wishes of the board? Do you have enough information to make a decision? Or do you want this on table? Sherri's recommendation is twenty-one three fourteen, with the addition of the land at fifty-nine twenty-nine for a total of twenty-seven two forty-three. Are you, uh, are you applying to, uh? Can I hear a motion to approve that, or do you have a?
We have them calling him, so.
Oh, we'll hear it when he calls in? We're still live, okay, all right.
The best by knowledge.
Good.
Did we ever shut it off, did we, Tom?
I did.
Okay, then we're still on.
We're still live, okay. So then we need a value here. You think that's too high?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just think you might have to justify it, seven thousand dollars on a twenty thousand dollar rig.
All right.
When the Supreme Court decided this in two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and eighteen valuation seventeen.
It was two thousand and eighteen valuation, and it just went through the Supreme Court, we just got noise that, on that.
Something at the end, probably, twenty-five, I don't know.
If you left that, if you honored that, uh, that decision of twenty, and the land used twenty-nine, you're talking fourteen thousand for that house and garage. I mean, that's, that's unrealistic.
Yeah, it's too low.
Yeah, the garage is two-by-six walls, they're all insulated, it's a finished garage.
I mean, you guys know better than me, if you think, if they think about it, I don't have a problem. Everybody else thinks it's, that's where it should be, I just, I don't know.
You gotta know that, I don't know. What's your district, Fay? You're pretty familiar with that house. Joe, you lived in it?
It's more cosmetic in it, rather than, you know, structure or.
Let's look on the outside and tell, what do you guys think?
It's just exterior looking, the looks are off, I don't think, that's exterior, you live right next to it, okay?
No. The garage is pretty bad shape, the doors are so bad.
The bones of it are pretty good, isn't it?
They are.
What do you, what do you think?
I make a motion to go with Sherri's recommendation, twenty-seven two forty-three.
Well, like any of the permissioned houses.
Is a motion by Commissioner Carlson to go with the recommendation values for a total of twenty-seven two forty-three? Is there a second to that?
I'll second it.
Okay, Joe, thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, the motion carries.
Oh, shall we try and correct it?
Is it, should I, maybe I could just call it, huh? Is it six nine eight one thousand?
No.
Oh.
Eight five two sixty-one hundred.
Eight five two, sixty what?
Sixty-one hundred.
The next one is, who's the next one?
He's asking for a conference ID number.
One eight seven five two.
Bye, bye. Okay.
The next, do you, do you want to continue on with this?
I'm sure nobody's on it.
Hello?
It said two attendees.
So it's us and you. So we have four left, five left to do of gyms, or we can, um, put these to later this afternoon and go on to the. This one, because then we have Shunsbury, it's calling at two fifteen, so it's up to you guys. So, okay, so, yes, that's what we'll do, is we'll put the rest of these gyms aside.
All right.
For a little bit. If, oh, sorry. And then we will talk about.
The one we're talking about?
Is this the Sisitin management?
Sisitin management.
Which is the Dollar Store.
The Family Dollar of Bon Hiccup.
That's the old one.
So, to hold me concerned, I have attached our supporting documents, an agent of authorization, so please let me know if you require anything else. Ryan Cohen. Ryan, we've tried to reach out and contact him, um, he no longer works with the company. So we did, um, contact, called the office, the pipeline, and we got ahold of somebody else, um, it was Ashley, who is up in the carbon copy of emails. And she told us that, um, Ryan no longer works there, so thanks for letting me be involved. Uh, I'm not sure, like Lisa said, if they are going to do anything or not. Um, this is their appeal, is actually their appeal here. They have appealed many, um, many properties throughout the state.
How can they all say Dollar?
Are we, are we Family Dollar or Dollar General?
Dollar General, the sign says.
There's different, Salem, there's different prices.
But it's least, least comparable, so.
So these are for.
On the west, western end of town or the east end?
Family Dollar, if you look up here on the front page.
Right.
Family Dollar at four nineteen West Hickory.
Right.
That is up here. This is what they're appealing, is that value.
Okay.
They are using comparables of the Dollar General, of a lot of dollars that go forward.
Wiling in the back, push back, they got all kinds of family dollars.
And then here's the Family Dollar, Dollar Street.
Oh, there you go.
So, um, what we have on the Family Dollar. Are these in their? Oh, yes, okay. So that is our comparable. If you look hard back in your packet, you have Family Dollar comparables two thousand twenty-one, it's going to be on a spreadsheet like this. And so, um, other counties were asking for our information on our Family Dollar and in our Dollar Tree, we sent the information out that we got. They sent information to us. So all of these that I got here are information, property cards from all different counties representing Dollar Store, Dollar General. They are, I had Lisa put them on a spreadsheet, so this is the spreadsheet we're looking at. So we have your bill, we have square footage, we have sold for, we have the sold date, we have the assessed building, and we have actually the name of the store that is here. So, um, our Sisitin building is the second one up, or the first Sisitin, that is the one they are appealing, the Family Dollar Store, for three hundred and ninety-eight thousand six hundred and thirty-one. It's sold for eighty, eight hundred and ten thousand dollars. It's sold for eighty, eight-hundred-and-ten thousand dollars. And they are feeling that they, um, they feel that it's too high.
That's what they hate for.
Do they factor in, do they factor in something there that's like, like the, like it's a, like it's the value of the business? Not necessarily so much just the structure of the...
More merchandise, or whatever.
That's, yeah, like Don says.
So their, their last sheet, it says... Down on the bottom, it says total market value. That is their request of what they would like to have it appealed to at three-hundred-and-ten thousand, three-ninety-three. But when we look at all of the comparables that we have, and the work footage that we have... No, that's prior. Because their land, the building they want at two-eighty-two-five-fourteen, and the land value they would like at twenty-seven, eight-seventy-eight. And we have land value at thirty-three thousand. Because up on Highway ten, our values are at a hundred and twenty-five dollars, front button. And they got two-hundred-and-sixty-four.
My guess is they can't deal with the competition, so they're asking for us to disstop the business, or subdue their business.
And it's, and it's the same owners, right, that paid eight-ten? It's the same owners that paid the eight-ten?
Mm-hmm.
And I know the building right next to it, too, you could probably buy for less than a hundred thousand.
Was that the...
That whole area of you? So, everyone, but, but there's gotta be different values there, I mean, that's what they'd call a good sale and a not so good sale.
The one that you would not consider.
You certainly couldn't replace it for, for what she's got there.
So before the building got put up, the land value was, they paid, um, fifty thousand for it. For this land. That, and two thousand and six. And then they had the discretionary, which, um, Paul had talked about here prior, about since Thomas Sisitin, if you do a bill over five thousand dollars, you get five years' tax rate. They did that.
What did you say?
And then in two thousand and seven, they sold, um, for seven-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand.
Oh, the, the original developer turned around and sold it? Seven-thirty-five, that was the land in the building, huh?
What year was that?
Two thousand and seven.
One year later?
Mm-hmm. So the building is, like, it says, um, here on the comparable, so there is eight thousand square feet. And it's built in two thousand and six.
Everything, is it the same, Sherry?
My recommendation is to leave out this. Talking with other assessors throughout the county, they were, um, started off with the state, they were also doing very minimal or to no, I don't know.
Four, four, four-nine, three-two?
Yes.
What was it?
Three, three-nine-eight-six-one-three, plus thirty-three thousand.
Motion for no change? It's a motion by Commissioner Zappo for no change to the evaluation. There's a second, but, is that you, Bill? There's a second by Ray's. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion?
You want to?
Signify by saying aye.
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 I think you just wind it, because you get squeezed up.
You okay?
Take a three-minute quick break.
Hey, is this one done there, Don, can I have this one?
Yeah, you can have it, if you...
Who's these next guys now?
It's Sherry. Sean'sburg. He's got the basement house, right off of Highway ten.
Crossing the ball field there, right, or the outfield?
Yeah, okay.
Basement house?
All you wanna do is zoom up.
Is that one okay?
You, what's your Dennis? Two.
This house is always for sale, ain't it?
It's been signed there for a million years, yeah.
Ain't this house always got a for-sale sign? Oh, right.
Wow, he just put signs up there for all his other properties, he can't do that, because it's the most obvious.
Good afternoon. Hi, Bob, I can't hardly hear you, can you hear us?
I can hear you, guys.
Okay, can you hear us better?
No, I can't hear.
Okay, so with us today, we have Tom Burgelt, Tim Simple, Dennis Jensen, Don Carlson, Fay Johnston, Paul Stapleton, Billy Ray, Joe Just, Lisa Skoll, myself, and Don Stabler. So what we are talking about today is the... The blue house, the blue basement house?
Yeah.
The blue basement house. So they have, um, a copy of everything with it, and, um, I guess, I misplaced the appeal. Your letter of this appeal, can I just say that? So I will read the appeal letter, I would like to, uh, my property reevaluated, I feel this is too high, located at three-seventh Avenue East. Okay? So what you are only appealing is the basement house, you are not appealing the garage house. The white one. Correct?
Right.
Right. So the blue house was a basement, and I will let you explain to the commissioners, um, and the Board of Equalization, your story, so you can go ahead.
Uh, it's, it's, it's a house, it's no, uh, it gets watered a lot, it's very difficult to rent out. Here we toast it up, there was living quarters upstairs, that's why it's not where it is, and, uh, there isn't no living quarters, just an attic. So that's all I got to say about it, so...
Okay. Yes, and that is something that we had, um, thought, that there was living quarters upstairs, we had valued it at that square footage. And so we've taken that out, and we lowered it down to a one-point-five. Um, badly wore, wore out versus the badly warrant, and it is literally a, a cement lockout basement, and the water just runs down when you go into that, um, go into the alley there to get to the place, the water just congregates right into this, that front door.
And it also, yeah, it also comes through the north, from all the streets up north down the alley, down through there also.
Oh, great, yeah. I noticed that with the big, um, the big runoff ditches that were through there, it was very rough driving vehicle to do that up because of the washout.
And the water comes all the time through the street.
Right. And so with that, I would, um, I would like to recommend to the board a twenty percent external depreciation for a value of thirteen thousand, one-ninety-five.
Yeah.
Why not accessory buildings?
Eighteen-two-seventy-seven.
The other house. Oh, isn't there a shop down there, too?
No, that's the other house, that used to be a garage, and that's the other house now, because he's got, on one property card, he's got two, two, two rentals, one used to be the basement house, or is the basement house, one used to be a garage, he transformed that into a house.
So, duh.
So we're not talking about the garage house, we're just talking about the...
Those figures are not on here.
Those figures are on there, we're only talking about, um...
House two?
House number... House number one.
Anyway, they don't have copies.
Yeah.
Oh, you don't have copies of that one, so...
No, they're not.
Okay. But, okay, we're, on the one we have, it's accessory building appraisal, fourteen thousand, eight-hundred-and-thirteen, what is that? House number two?
Yes.
Okay, so that's not...
That's not the one we're talking about, we're talking about house number one, for two thou, twenty-two thousand, six-sixty-eight.
Right, okay.
And I would recommend that be lower to thirteen, one-ninety-five.
Okay, what about the lot, stays the same?
Five thousand, eight-two in the lot.
They put lots of that batch in order to last.
Yeah. This would be one that I would say we should probably lower the lots due to the...
The drainage or the water.
The drainage of the water.
Doesn't the second house sit on that same lot?
It, it does.
What?
Yes, it does.
So in effect, you're doing twenty-five-hundred per, per property for lot value?
I think lowering that to forty-two-five, eighty-two.
Very difficult, it's a long, it's a long, also have, it's a fault because of the basin of the water, and it's out there, and the basin will get flooded once in a while, too. This is, this is the rain.
Right.
And there, is the storm sewer, the storm sewer system hooked up? In that area, in that little spot?
No, for sure, is that the storm sewer hooked up to that spot? I don't, I don't think that's really low. I don't think it is, it's lower than the storm sewer should be.
Oh, was it?
It's really low, like a hole down there.
Yeah.
Where does the water drain to?
It drains out, well, there used to be a big four-foot culvert, and they took that one out, and they put a, just a foot and a half culvert in, I hope it doesn't fuck up, it's, it used to be a really big one. It goes across the road to the south, they're right between the two houses.
Oh, so it goes underneath that? What used to be the four lane?
Down the streets from up north, down the alley, right down through into the yard. Where it comes, there's no drain up there, there really should be a drain up there.
That's an engineer problem.
Yeah. I thought he was gonna say drain into the city sewer system.
I'd make a recommendation, go with Sherry's, or, I would make a motion to go with Sherry's recommendation.
Oh, second.
Thirteen thousand, one-ninety-five on the house, five thousand, eight-two on the land, a total of eighteen thousand, two-seventy-seven.
Alright. There's a motion and a second to that effect? Is there further discussion? All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, motion carries.
Okay, so, Bob, what would happen if you would then did a letter from us, um, within the next couple weeks to say what the recommendation would be, uh, and did you hear that it would be, um, reduced down to that thirteen, one-ninety-five for the house value?
Alright, okay, thank you.
You're welcome, have a good day.
Thank you.
Good snow.
Really, yes.
That's it, I told my wife, she'll bring up the wine. We miss... Dennis won't share his M&amp;M's with me, I'm just a fan.
You keep telling them to put tile and all in that cum salt machine out there.
He gets back.
Okay, we are, go back to Permonton, um, record number thirty-four-hundred. This is the Supreme Court, but they did a no change. This is a very tiny home, it is only six-hundred-and-forty square feet.
So he lost it on the appeal at this Supreme Court, but now he's affiliated again.
What's your recommendation?
We did a twenty percent up on this one external as well. And, um... So, we did, what we normally do is if the square footage is below eight-hundred square foot, we give it a depreciation of a functional for a smaller size, we've done that to all of our homes. And so we gave that an additional fifteen, so if you want just the fifteen up, not the twenty percent external, that would bring it to eleven thousand, five-four-six, like it is, that's where we would leave it. Or four-fifty-six, eleven, four-fifty-six, that's his assessment value. If we add the twenty percent external onto it, then it would bring it down to nine thousand, five-fifty-three.
I'll go with twenty percent.
Okay, so the nine, five, three, three. Oh, no, nine, five, five, three.
That's a nice little house, isn't it?
Uh, Lisa can attest to that.
Excuse me, the basement is real bad, was it caved in and everything?
We didn't even get in.
Didn't get in there?
Um, and...
I mean, we were in the house.
Yeah. But the walk-ins came in, and I worked on the basement furnace a couple times, and I, I mean, the furnace was, it was caved in.
And that's...
Jerry, Jerry Anderson did it. But, excuse me?
I'm sorry, finish up. And we do have a no add for the basement, because it says caved in, could not get down the stairs. So we do not have a basement value on this eleven thousand.
Is this, is this west across the street from Ernie Benson?
No, it's not, oh, right on Chesta, right there on Chesta. Across from the church, somewhere in that area. It's over by Chesta, right?
Uh, yeah, it's a block in, uh, taking over to Howard Avenue or something.
Yeah, across the street?
Straight across from Howard.
Okay, so that would be...
Yeah, Arnie's, yeah, Arnie's to the east.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Jerry Anderson did it one time.
I'll make a motion, bring it to ninety-five, fifty-three. Total, ninety-five, oh, ninety-five plus three-three, eighty.
You've heard the motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Paul?
Yes.
Alright. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
The next one, we've got, um, thirty-seven, seventy-six. This one is at six-oh-four, Fourth Avenue East.
Do you have a way, people?
Do you remember what he paid for that?
Yes, it was through high. He paid $2,5300.
How long ago?
2018. And then he, yep, and then it went to David Park and then then it went to Hemmings and then Pat Deitz was in it. Bobby and Joey Ham was in it. Sandra Quinn.
This is the house that
Two murders.
Yeah, is this the house that
Had a murder?
Yep.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, right down here then, huh?
On the other side of that hall, it's just whatever it is.
Where did they dump it? Maybe it was
Did I buy it and like fly?
Did you recommend a decrease on that, a decrease of $11,000?
I did. I recommended that 20% external depreciation on this. So it would then be 26,080. It is, it is a fairly badly worn out. And it is a one and a half story.
23,471.
I did, I was in this one.
Didn't they remodel it? I thought, I saw pictures on what is that, seven?
Zillow.
Oh, Zillow.
And I thought it looked really nice.
They did, this is, this is one of the better ones. And it has got a staircase. It's got a nice stairwell on it. Yeah, the basement is a kind of a two-part basement. There's no finish in it at all, but it's, it's kind of angled in there a little bit. Because the porches do not have basement underneath it.
So what, what's the issue with this?
It's just too high for them.
I, I think if you put 20% out of that, or 15, even though what's happened in that house. And I was in it in 18. I, I think we're on the fence. Like in pair of 32,471. I, I wouldn't be holding for that. It's gonna have that stigma, right? Too many people saying to mind you get 36,700 for a house that somebody and I know at 32. And it wasn't rough shape in 18.
It wasn't rough.
I mean, just because it sat for how long empty, nobody done anything. Water was coming through the doors. The basement looked horrible.
So it was purchased in, in 2018 for $25,000. Did it have a big jump at 32?
No, I, as I said, I think we'll land everything. I think
Oh, you think it was?
We're right on the fence at 32.
He did improvements in that.
Right, yes. No, that's what I said. I'm not, I'm not opposing 32.
Can we accept that as a motion to approve? The 32, 071? Fay, thank you. Second by Don.
So the house 25,080.
All in favor, signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
63,46.
That one a little too tripper.
This one is right next to the right stream to reduce below. Are you done here?
Yeah.
And I see that they must be doing some more remodel or he must be cleaning it all again or something because there's a lot of stuff activity happening on the street. And Lisa said this one was in really bad shape. We have it at a 1.5 and a 2 for quality and condition. With the 20% external, I would recommend putting it at $20,808. The basement is going the it just had that attached garage on it. Square footage of the house is 1346. Built in early 20. It is a two-story, but it looks
Okay, so again, this, we put it at 20,000. Two years later, it's worth 25,800, 25,900?
We're at 20,000 and then the land value is about 5,000, so
25,800, 900.
Seems high, but it looks like. That one hasn't appreciated at all.
So we do have going remarks in the basement. The basement is going in. So if you would like to, you know, do something different, filter. Do what you have to do.
You guys know more about What do you think? What's your opinion, Don? What did you say?
Well, I just, looking, looking at the pictures, I mean, it looks pretty rough. I mean, the shingles are curling up and it's just, talk about broken windows and fixtures hanging down. I guess I, I wouldn't go too much over what the Supreme Court put it at.
Oh, you're 20 grand. Then you'd be at 14,918 on the house.
13,918. Does it look like it's worth more than that or? Pictures don't, don't show it, I don't think, but so.
I think you're ready with all parts.
I'll second that. There's a motion, Paul, okay? Okay. Paul made the motion and Tim seconded. 14,918 for a total of 20,000. Any discussion? All in favor signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
You guys know the hours, I'm just
The sand park is, a lot of these houses were really, really nice houses. You're gonna go, and just, it's so
Some people just don't take care of their properties. For most people, it's their biggest investment they ever make in their life. You don't do anything. Big gear, it just goes downhill.
Record number 1,4355. This is over on the west side of the lot. We have 1344 square feet. We have a basement that is poured concrete, not finished, not used. And a garage, as the doors don't work off the garage. So we have
I think this is a, is this a modular that
It looks like, yeah, yeah, it is.
That's matured, ain't that old enough?
No, but the construction quality is, way back then, yeah.
And it is.
12,500.
So with the 20% um, depreciation external, we have it at 15,157.
Right on 18,000 for the
Yep, about 18,000. I think it's done, $6,000 in two years.
And I guess I have the comments that were on the
Must have looked like a creep.
A great location.
You gotta buy it?
It has a tin garage. Patty was in it and that's, that's a manufactured home. Uh, two, three key bathrooms, three bedrooms. Washer dryer hooked up. Basement is poured concrete, not finished. Then it has a deck of about eight by 14 deck on it. It has a window AC. It's electric. Baseboard E, backed by propane. It's got hard cardboard sheeting on part of the exterior walls and part of it is vinyl siding. So they got an exciting on it.
I'm, I'm gonna make a motion of, for Sherri's recommendation. I think you start dipping down $10 for a house of that size and you shouldn't be living in it. You know, like Sherri's easier than I do. That's my, my motion is to go share your recommendation.
So what's told
What are those numbers again, please?
15,157 for the house. Land is 2,798.
So the total?
What, you tell?
17,955.
And last but not least
Both second. Pushing the pencil yet, I don't know. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Yeah.
Joe, Ken? Any further discussion for 17,995? Pro. All in favor signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries. Okay, Sherri, I know you wanna get down here.
Uh, last one is 9,052. This one was also at the Supreme Court. No change to the date of the maintenance value that we have on
Which houses is this?
This used to be England's house.
On the corner?
Great, yep. Down right next to Susan and Mario.
We did, we did this one last year too?
Even since, with dinner?
Yeah.
They're more bad, yeah.
Oh, so in 2017, we reduced it down at 24 to $10,000. Because when I went in it, at that time, if we all remember, it was horrible. You couldn't walk on doors, no stairs, you couldn't do anything. He has put a lot of remodeling to this house. I feel the 24,995 is adequate. I, I feel there is no change to this one at all. The land value is up there due to the fact he's got full six lots and it's on the corner. So the front is the corner. It's a corner lot. So therefore he's got quite a he's got a big lot. Um, the garage back here. We have we didn't add that garage at all. There's no value on the assessment for the garage. And the basement is still in bad shape and so we did not have an add on that. We did not do a value for that either. But the actual house itself has done a lot of improvements in it and it is water is better at this point.
We would start with the basement structure.
But, uh, so we have 24,995 for that value of that house. We still have the quality as a low and we have the condition as a two. So we have a drop down, but I don't feel that the 20% external is needed on this one. I don't, I don't feel that, but if you wish to do something different, we should think of whatever.
That's a motion from the board to accept Sherri's recommendation by Commissioner Vergel. Second by Zempel. At, for a total of 35,159. All in favor of that signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. That concludes, okay, Sherri?
That concludes our Board of Equalization consolidated. I do not have any more from Assistant Appeals at all. So I wish to thank both Hall for you, Joe, Paul, and Bill for doing this.
Thank you very much. You do a good job. Really dedicated, working up.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Paul, Bill, Joe. Appreciate your help.
Thank you guys. I appreciate it.
Well, we do think that is a perfectly like you said.
How come that's a red today? No, it's green. These ain't got no color.
You're under surveillance, Tim.
This livestream is brought to you by Dakota Pond and Thrift for all your pond needs. Countryside Yen Assisted Living and Memory Care. And Rosalt, where your family is our family. First Savings Bank of Sisseton. Use our online banking to save you time. Stilson Service in Sisseton with Marathon Fuels. Tri-State Water in Sisseton for all your water needs. Water softeners and reverse osmosis right here in Sisseton. And of course, the Sisseton Courier, where we do more than the weekly newspaper. Thanks for watching and have a great day.